Good evening and welcome to our business meeting of January 23, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are reconvening. We convened this business meeting at 6:30 and then had an executive session. So we are reconvening this meeting. I'm going to open it up by asking if anybody wants, the public wants to speak on any of the listed agenda items. Mr. Ferraro.
Oh, we got two. All right.
My name is Joe Ferraro, I'm a resident. I can't say anything.
There you go.
Because you had to hear what my name was. It's Joe Ferraro. And I'm coming back because I know that you were adopting a policy today about the neutrality of the district and I think I support the ideals of it. I am concerned about unintended consequences of the policy. And then kind of right in line with a brand-new administration coming in and essentially the doors being opened to ICE agents coming in to take undocumented students out of our school district. I don't want to poke the bear, kick the bee's nest, stir the pot, and get the board to and superintendent to say anything today about it. But in light of those things, that the new policies are coming down from the feds, I think there could be students at risk. And what the district's stance will be in defending those students, if that's to happen, I've only seen bits and pieces, probably not clear. And I do think that the state probably has a piece to play in this to defend our students. But I just, in light of this policy of neutrality, how much defense of our students will there be? And that's kind of what I'm seeing that come across right now. I'll have more to say later, but thanks.
So I could speak directly to the guidance we received from the New York State Education Department as well as the Governor's Office. The district has no legal responsibility to allow ICE agents into the buildings absent a signed warrant executed by a judge. We've been informed by the state, by our attorneys, and by the Governor's Office that we have no responsibility to allow that to happen within our schools. So I don't want to create chaos or angst amongst any one population, but that is not something that I expect to happen and it's not something that I would allow to happen either. So regarding that, just about the policy itself, our entire goal of this policy was essentially capture what our practice has been for as long as I know, right? Our practice has been that these topics should not be discussed unless it's directly related to curriculum. This is just a policy that captures what every employee in this district should already know. If we find ourselves where, in a position where we feel as if the policy is being used against us, we could very quickly reconvene our policy committee and make any changes. But in speaking with the board and reviewing the policy after the last board meeting, there's no feelings amongst those up here that we are changing our past practice. We're simply trying to capture it. And I don't have any reason to believe that if it turns out to be sort of used in a way it was not intended, we could very quickly change any language and ensure that it is serving its intended purpose, which is really just to make it policy, that the things that are already not allowed to happen in our classrooms are now not allowed by policy as opposed to practice. So that's really what our intention is and I hope that's how it's perceived by everyone. But for faculty and staff, it shouldn't feel any different than any other conversation we've ever had with them regarding what should be shared in a classroom with students and what should not. Any other public comments?
Something else, okay?
Yep.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you. Mark Weiss, I'm a resident of Putnam Valley. And I'm here because I was on the committee that's proposing the bond vote on January 28th, the next cold night of the season, right? You have to get out that day. And it was, I thought it was a great experience and I think that what's being proposed is really important and I want to say that it's not, it doesn't cost what people are saying it's going to cost. It comes out of other money than the money that we pay for our taxes, regular school taxes. So, and some of the things, I mean, I know I have a roof on my house that has that green moss on it, you know, and it's growing and I'm going to have to figure out what I'm going to do about that. But a roof on one of these buildings is much more than that, so I know the numbers are high. But again, the money comes from somewhere else, right? It doesn't come from here. So that's an opportunity for us to do stuff that's going to make things better here. Part of being on the committee, we walked around this whole place and I know where the nurses' room was because my granddaughter wound up there once in a while here and there. And I think it was more like a closet than a space. You look at the plans for it, that's exactly what it should look like, I think. So I'm hoping I'm talking to people on video or wherever this happens and I just urge people to vote on this coming week, January 28th. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you for your service on the committee. You know, it was open to anybody in the community and we're happy you were on it. Any other public comments? Okay, the treasurer's report for November 2024 is in the business office. I'd like to move to the consent agenda, number one, please.
Resolve to approve the consent agenda. Items 2 through 11 is presented to the board at this meeting.
Questions or comments? Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Second. The consent agenda includes the following: approval of minutes of the last meeting, CSE/CPSE placements, amending the 24-25 substitute listing, approving additional or unpaid hours for various staff members, approving a volunteer in the science research department, approving education law 2D opt-in regulations for vendors, specifically this one is for Google, also approving a RIC, One Risk Operations Center data privacy agreement, approving superintendent of schools to attend the NISCIS Winter Institute and Lobby Day in Albany, appointing chairpersons and election workers for the January 28-25 vote, chairpersons being Sam Oliverio and Crystal Hernandez, and appointing David Spittle as the chemical hygiene officer for the district, and no additional compensation.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The resolutions pass. Presentations. So we're going to start with a 2025-26 budget presentation on curriculum and instruction.
That sounds like it's four years away, next year. So I will start this evening by welcoming up Ms. Jackie Levine and I know she will be joined shortly by her principal colleagues.
Thank you very much, Dr. Love, and thank you to the Board of Education, our community. Looking forward to sharing this evening our proposed budget for the Curriculum and Instruction Department. Needless to say, we've been doing a lot of amazing work this year. I've had the opportunity to share a couple of those things earlier this year. This is looking ahead, looking to what next year will look like and has in store for us. And let's dive in and get started. I always like to start my presentations this way, reminding us of our shared mission and also our core values that we adopted recently about two years ago now. As you can see, we have our community, opportunity, resilience, and empowerment. While we have focus areas every year, I think we're still in the place of opportunity and resilience, bringing those two ideas together. You're going to see a lot of that presented here tonight. We continue to strive to keep our community connected and involved and get them to be as part of, as much of our district as we can, wherever we can. But we're presenting a lot of opportunities and teaching our students about resilience this year quite a bit. So that is just a little bit about where we are. And of course, our vision, the child first and foremost, we're always building a foundation for our future, our collective future, but mostly our students' future. And one thing that really brings our district together is what we look for in a learner, what a Putnam Valley learner looks like. And we really focus a lot on our IB learner profile attributes. These are very important terms to us. I know the print here is a little small. I can always share this directly with the board if needed. But as I speak later about the Blue Ribbon Commission and the graduation measures that are being taken on by the state, you will notice that these align quite well with what the state is expecting us to adopt as a profile of a graduate. We're already there pretty much because of our shared interest in this IB learner profile and helping our students attain these attributes that I think anyone would find, not just what we'd want for our kids, but exceptional attributes that we'd want for kids, such as being principled and balanced and open-minded and good communicators and thinkers. These are all important things to instill in our children and in all of our community. So when we think about who's a Putnam Valley learner, it's everyone. It's everyone here at this table. It's everyone in our audience. It's everyone in our schools, including our staff. So this is what we hope to bring to all of our learners here in Putnam Valley. Tonight, we'll go through by the numbers. I'm going to go through some of our enrollment data and our staffing data. And then we'll dive into the program enhancements and the district initiatives that we're going to undertake next year. The principals will join me to represent their buildings and speak a little bit about the great work that's ongoing right now, but mostly the work that we're looking ahead to. And then we'll talk about what that means, what we're going to need to be able to get the good work done. This is our enrollment data over the years, starting with October 21. We source this data from October every year. So our projection at the top for October 25 is where we think we'll be. Right now, those younger grades have had very small cohorts, leading to some of the enrollment data you see at the end. And right now, we're projecting about 90 students for kindergarten. I think we've seen a better kindergarten registration earlier on this year than we did last year, so we're hopeful to get to that number 90. But it has been a struggle to make sure we're having those young students come to our doors and making sure they all get registered in time. So if you're listening and you're a parent of an incoming kindergartner, we could always use your registration, right, Margaret? Any questions on our enrollment data?
I have one question. I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So at the bottom, it says October 21, that's the year?
Yes.
And then, so is that going across kindergarten at 100 grade, going across at 12, 30, and ahead 157?
Yes, correct.
So we're projecting 25, we have 90 for kindergarten, and then 139 at 12, 30?
Correct. Thank you. These are some of our district staffing trends, taking into consideration the needs of our students, how those change and fluctuate throughout the years, whether it is in special education or, you know, staff retirements, section sizes, whether we're increasing our sections for certain grade levels. So that changes year to year, but it's stayed pretty stable over the past couple of years. In our elementary school, we have our teachers and related service providers. We're projecting needing about 55 total teachers and related service providers for next year for the elementary school and about 488 students, again, considering those smaller cohorts that have started to come through the building. This is what our school projections will look like for next year. And moving on to the middle school, these are our projections again for next year. Again, looking at our data from previous years, staying pretty stable in terms of teachers, those students changing with those larger sections we have now coming through. So our fifth grade was last year's fourth grade. The board determined it was important to increase those sections. And so, and we already have the fifth grade, but that was the former fourth grade, and now we're going to get the new fourth grade coming up.
Sorry, Jackie, what's the asterisk on 23, 24?
Sorry, say that again.
The asterisk on 23, 24?
Yes.
Forty-eight point four and an asterisk?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not sure. That might have been just like a typo, like an extra icon there. I'm not sure why, but we can remove that. Thank you.
Jackie, quick question. The students from Garrison, are they included in the high school numbers?
Yes, they are.
Wonderful.
Yes. So we'll talk about that now in a moment. Our projections for next year and the grades. So our high school does include Garrison projections. We currently have 77 stu-
Can you back up real quick to the-
Sorry.
I just have a question. For the elementary school?
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
I was just noticing that in 2022 and 2023, we had 47 teachers and 503.
Sorry for the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. That we had 47 teachers and related services and 548 students.
Yeah.
And that going forward for next year, we're going to have 55 teachers and related services and 488 students. We have increased the number of teachers by eight and significantly decreased the number of students.
So some of that is related to the related services that students are provided, the special education services that are provided, and, you know, those sort of items that come through ENL, for example. We had hired a new ENL teacher who was part-time in the elementary school and middle school. So that's how those numbers change. When students require more services, we require more staff to support those services.
And I could also add that it was a priority of the board coming off of the COVID pandemic to lower some class sizes.
That's what I was asking her. I thought, I believed that to be true. And I know that we were trying to do that.
Yeah, so we added sections to some grade levels to create smaller class sizes to students who were coming off of that, off of the pandemic.
Perfect. Thank you. So the related services, just to confirm, is not only teaching staff, it's the whole arena?
PT, OT, yes, of course, yes.
Thank you.
And for example-
Can I ask a question on that? If we could go back, so we have 488, that's projected, right?
Mm-hmm. Right. It could increase based on the number of kindergartners, of course.
It could increase, but also could increase if we had more kids in Garrison?
Not in our elementary school. That's only for high school at this time. Yes. But given our ENL population continues to grow and a lot of, there are students moving into our district from other districts, so I will say that there is a potential to increase from there.
Is it moving in?
Sure, sure. I think we left off at middle school projections. Here we go. So these are our projections for next year. Again, we had one of those cohorts that was a little small. It's moving up now into seventh grade, but otherwise, those larger classes are coming through and remain pretty stable.
We've also had some bubble classes, as I call them.
Big groups.
Two of my children happen to be a part of them, so there was one point where we had, we were teetering on 25 students in a class in elementary. And in being able to provide more support, we were able to lower that class number, which makes all the difference going from 25 students to 22 students.
Right.
It's a huge difference in the life of a teacher and also in the life of the students being serviced. I think that it's also important, as you were saying about special education, for the public to know that depending on the needs of special education students and the type of programming that they provide, if they're in a 15-1-1 class, then it means 15 students can be in that one class maximum. And so class size then begins to reduce based on the level of need of the students that are in the school district. If we have to provide more 12-1-1 classes or 6-1-1 classes, then the number of staff could go up and it looks strange because staff is going up while students may not be. But to Jackie's point, there is, there are quite a few months left for the kindergarten registration, so I would probably say that that number is going to be almost the same as we've had in the last couple of years because it's still very early.
Sure.
You also have to look year to year. None of the schools have a higher amount of teachers or staff involved than the previous year. Some even drop. You know, the high school stays the same with staffing. The middle school actually drops by a point two. And the elementary school drops by two individuals. So the staff is not overly increasing, it's just meeting the demands of that projected year. So I think we're in very good shape with that.
Thank you. I know our Board of Education is very interested in our career in tech numbers. While we don't necessarily have projections yet for next year's career in tech students, they just went to their tour recently and they're still deciding what they might want to do. We are currently at 77 students in our current class going to BOSI's current juniors and seniors.
That's outstanding.
It is great.
I bet we'll go above 80 by next year.
It might. It just might.
Yeah, hopefully the BOSI's will have enough space to-
Yeah, I know. And that's been a big problem. A lot of the classes are closed out for our kids, which is, you know, a tough thing. So I hope, you're right, Jeanette, that they increase their offerings.
All right. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Just some instructional staffing considerations. We do have one retirement of a reading teacher at the elementary school. We also have a teaching assistant retirement. These will just be positions that we replace that position with a person, so there's no change in the staffing. There's the potential for another 8-1-1 program. As Crystal was mentioning earlier, there are different types of special education programs. This is a highly specialized program and you can have eight students maximum in the program. So there is the potential that we may need one. And of course, there's the potential always for additional ENL support, but we don't have any data on that just yet. That kind of comes at us at different times and randomly. So we're watching and waiting to see if we will need to consider additional ENL support at this time.
Jackie?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I apologize because my order is different than yours.
Okay.
So that's why I'm kind of behind you in asking your questions.
No worries.
So I just want to clarify, if you could go to the high school projected enrollment again. And the students from Garrison, the only time that students from Garrison can join our schools are in high school because Garrison has an elementary middle, they do not have a high school.
Correct.
So they have an opportunity, they have options where to go. In the last couple of years, they came to Putnam Valley, the operations at Garrison, and asked us if we'd like to be considered as one of the options where the students could be enrolled. So I just want to make sure that that's clarified.
Yes.
That they came to us and asked us.
Yes, they did.
And since then, we've had positive-
Yeah. They've heard such wonderful things about our programs. They sought us out to be part of our program, which was really a benefit to Putnam Valley. But we are so proud that they-
And their students.
And their students, of course. And we are very proud to be able to welcome them into our community.
Right. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? As far as Garrison students coming to our high school, do we cap, is there a cap on how many people we're allowed to take or able to stay?
We would love to take every single one of them.
How many are there?
Classes depend on how many, like our class sizes vary, so do theirs. They've been 18 to low twenties, they average. So the maximum number of students we can get any one year would be their maximum eighth grade class, which is typically between, let's say, 15 and 20 students.
And they wouldn't all be going into one class. They would be separated out, too. So.
Okay. Any more questions on our enrollment data from the board?
Sorry.
Yes. Okay. So I'd like to welcome up Dr. Margaret Podesta. She's going to present to us on some of the initiatives happening at our elementary school this coming school year.
So cute.
These pictures are great. We love this.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the principal of the elementary school, I proudly say. And this picture shows the solar eclipse event out on the blacktop last spring. So we were well-prepared for a great day of school and to experience this. Our initiatives coming up and actually currently in our school focus heavily on writing instruction. We've taken a very hard look at our ELA practices over the past few years. We've adopted the Scholastic Literacy Program. We have taken in Haggerty with phonemic awareness and built into our K through 2 classes. And we're really focusing as a building on the writing revolution. We have teacher leaders who have stepped up and just naturally become leaders in our staff as far as leading professional development hours, providing in-service courses. And this writing revolution is not a curriculum, but it's an approach to teaching writing that is integrated K through 12 through all of the content areas. So we're finding success with it. We're still learning, but we're doing great work. And you can see from the very early grades the difference that it's making just in how to compose a sentence. So we start with that, with the writing revolution. We're focusing on phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, and that, as reported by our primary grade teachers, children are learning to rhyme better, chunk words better. And we were fortunate enough to have Mrs. McCarty here several months ago with her first-grade friends demonstrating what that looked like. Our Scholastic Literacy work continues with a heavy focus on guided reading and stations. We also have computer-based testing taking place. Actually, our fourth graders, who are required to take their state tests online this year on computers, had a simulation day today with their ELA. So that is a learning experience for us. We know that other schools across the state are doing this. Our third graders will begin next year. This year, our third-grade teams, our teachers really came together and decided they'd like another year of paper-based testing. Our science lab is always busy. Mrs. Bros helps to organize and facilitate the materials and the lessons with the teachers in there. The scheduling changed this year. As you know, the science test from the state changed and went to fifth grade. We talked a lot about that at our elementary principals' group at BOSI's this month. But the children have to do investigations and third and fourth graders really need time in that lab with their classes. So that affected how we were looking at K through 2 and the science teaching that really is heavily taking place in their own classrooms and not the lab. So that was a shift for us. Parent curriculum nights are always important to us, having parents into our building. We happen to be hosting an ELA night next Thursday at 6 o'clock. Everyone is welcome. This is for K through 2, going through how our literacy components align with the science of reading and what we are offering our students on a daily basis. We also have Mrs. Ribero there, who works closely with Mr. Hogan, but she will be able to translate, provide information in Spanish for our parents. Our character education and diversity, we kind of took a different shift this year with Mrs. Roby and I leading the way with our community meetings, we call them, with our grade levels. A different theme every week. Families get challenges to take a theme and work on at home. And a book that is shared in every classroom each month focusing on the theme. This month's theme, this month's theme is safety and self-control. And you can apply that to pretty much every part of the elementary day. As you know, we don't have Mandarin anymore in our elementary school, but we do have Spanish exposure because we have a very talented teacher aide in the library who greets the children in Spanish. They're learning vocabulary. They have books at their fingertips, poetry, bulletin boards. So it's just so nice to offer our children as much as we can throughout the day. So I'm going to brag for a minute, so just enjoy the moment. You may have heard that in U.S. News and World Report, again, Putnam Valley Elementary School was ranked in the top 3% of elementary schools in the state. We are so proud of this. Rankings and numbers don't mean everything, especially when you're looking at how happy your students are, how your parents are welcomed into the school, the child-centered learning that takes place. But these numbers do mean something. It means that our curriculum matches the state standards. It means that our children do succeed academically. They're prepared for what's in front of them, whether it's a state test or just getting ready for the middle school years. So when you break down the numbers, we were ranked 113 out of close to 4,000 elementary schools in the state. And when you look at the schools, some of them that we know, you know, in Westchester, south of us, we're right there and even above so many schools that we know. And we're just so proud. We've come a long way in the last decade. And it has to do with the teachers that we have, the way that they are so committed to their work, and the resources that we've been able to make available to them. Now we'll go to the middle school.
Wait, Margaret. Wait. The computer-based testing, you piloted it today or?
It was like a practice simulation day.
So there any like, oh my gosh, this is going to, this is going to be terrible? Or this seemed to work fairly smoothly? The students, you know, accessed the information that they needed to?
Every bit of that. I think that there's a little fear. And sometimes with the computers, I said to one teacher, maybe, maybe we, the adults, have to get out of our own way because the children are so savvy. But there is a certain way to copy and paste when you are trying to take a quote from the text and put it into your short response writing. So just having the children do that and practice with the tools on the Chromebooks, it wasn't by any means a disaster, but I think that it's a learning experience for us. It's a learning curve. So we have this simulation. We'll do a math day next week. And then there will be our practice days, which we do every year before, and practice all the different test settings and the proctors and everything.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, we'll get there, yeah.
Margaret, just two things. One, having seen the band and chorus concert yesterday, they were outstanding. They really were.
Yes, they really were.
The music was, I was surprised. Saints Go Marching In, some of my favorite, you know, folk and international songs. But, I especially liked that in the chorus presentation, they also explained the song in Spanish. And, I love that the emphasis here on the second language in our country is being so emphasized. And, that's a prideful thing. Also, congratulations with that ranking in U.S. News and World Report. That's just outstanding.
Thank you.
It really is.
Thank you. And, I do want to say that this was the first concert presented and organized by not only Mrs. Bennett, but our brand-new music teacher, Mr. Derland.
Yes.
And, you know, he had the new-year teacher nerves yesterday.
He plays a great guitar, I tell you.
Oh, he's very talented, and he sings. But, when you saw two classes come together for what he called, I think, the smart bands, those ukuleles and xylophones, that's happening in general music class. That's not even band and instrumental instruction that they do with Mrs. Bennett. So, there's a lot of great stuff going on there.
I love that, yeah.
Thank you.
The arts are important.
Thanks.
I just want to add that you didn't give yourself kudos in that three percent. You gave your teachers and your resources, and I just want to give the leadership of the building, you're doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And, I'm supported by all of you.
I'm going to jump on that because what most people probably don't know about Margaret is that she is a leader of leaders. And, every time I have the opportunity to say that, I will, because you are. You are not only a trusted colleague, but you have had all three of my children at this point. And, they have all been cared for, loved. I have seen the way that the other children in the building are just so loved. You know everybody's name, and that matters. And, so, thank you so much for your leadership. I, you know, the sentiment of a building, really, it comes from the community that's built. And, the leader has a lot to do with that, as does the staff. And, every time you walk into Putnam Valley Elementary School, it really does feel like rainbows and sparkles and lots of learning. And, kudos to you for the science of reading work that has really transpired in the last few years along Jackie's side. I mean, the work that is happening in that building is tremendous. The fact that you're focusing on phonemic awareness, the fact that you're talking about writing, the fact that you have to lift up other things like science experiments that New York State decides to do, you know, within five seconds of, you know, thinking about it and dropping that on the schools without much support. You know, there's just been so much change from the state down, and y'all have handled it with such grace and from a place of integrity. So, thank you so much. My little one is just so happy. On weekends, she tells me, "Mommy, can I please go to school?" And, I tell her, "No, you have to give those people a break." And, so, thank you, thank you so much for all that you do.
Aw, thank you, Crystal. I really appreciate that. And, she really is a doll.
Next, I would like to welcome Travis McCarty, the principal of our middle school.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Travis McCarty. I have the privilege of being the principal of Putnam Valley Middle School. And, I'm here to talk a little bit about our initiatives. I know Margaret talked a little bit about CBT. I don't really have it up here as an initiative, but it is happening within our school in all grades, five through eight, this upcoming year. So, we decided to kind of transition as a whole. I know the state is requiring us to roll out in a shorter fashion. But, we decided it went so well last year with two of our grade levels, we will be doing all four grade levels this year. And, for those of you that don't know, in fifth grade, they take three exams. So, we have the ELA, we have the math, and we have the science. And, we also have that repeating again in eighth grade. So, when you say our students are tested and assessed, they are. And, it's kind of nice because it's standardized, and we can compare across the state. But, we certainly are preparing our kids to take these exams in their future. So, we did do our simulations this week. And, our students who have Chromebooks in their hands as early as fifth grade, they're really masterful with these devices. But, the difference is, there's a certain way with each assessment that they take. So, the simulation was a nice practice for them. And, Laura Sherwood is just amazing. I know you're all aware she's retiring on us this year. But, she just makes everything run really smoothly, as well as my assistant principal, Ms. Zeca, and our testing coordinator, Heather Minch. So, kudos to them. Everything has run smoothly so far, and we expect it to run smoothly nearing more the end of the year. So, testing aside, our largest initiative at the middle school is IBMYP, for those of you who haven't heard, which is International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program. And, we are excited to announce that our verification visit is here. It's, they're coming April second and third. And, we have done a tremendous amount of work with our application for authorization. And, a big thank you to Stephanie Tricalla and Mary Kay Cohen, and all of our teachers for their work on developing IBMYP units. It is a tremendous transformation. We have been working on this weekly. Our two advisors meet with all of our staff every single week. And, it's like working with your students, and everyone has different needs. So, some teachers are more veteran teachers, some teachers are in the middle of their careers, some teachers are just starting. And, it's a different experience for all. And, I have to tell you, I had the pleasure of being in a couple of classrooms this week in addition to others. But, specifically, yesterday, an eighth-grade ELA teacher going over the statement of inquiry with her class and talking about the foundations of World War II and how they need to know the background of World War II and Stalin with then-reading Animal Farm. And, it was just so exciting to sit there and hear the kids explain the statement of inquiry, what the vocabulary meant, and how they were going to be applying it to not only leaders during World War II, but then the novel in which they're going to read. And, then, today, oh, my goodness, it brought me back in time to a humanities class, which I taught for twelve years. And, the teacher was talking about pharaohs of ancient Egypt and the ten learner-profile attributes, and how each pharaoh, there were six pharaohs that the kids could go to stations on, and they got to choose three, and explain what learner-profile attribute that pharaoh reflected and why. And, it was just transformational for me because these characteristics, which we ask our students to embody and grow with, they're now applying it to ancient pharaohs in Egypt. And, what a great way to bring the past to the present. And, it just embodied everything that we're doing with IB. And, to see these changes throughout the middle school, you wouldn't see this five years ago. Like, it is truly transformational, and the work ethic of our teachers and all the great stuff that they're doing, kudos to them in this journey, which we're all in. And, we're looking forward to that verification visit and the feedback that we will receive from IB. And, another kind of part to that initiative is we're continuing to send our staff to learn more about IB. So, there's the assessment piece to IB. There's the social-emotional learning piece to IB. And, we have some newer teachers that we'd like to send out to get even a greater grasp on those units. So, I always say, a thirst for knowledge is not just with our students, but also our teachers. If our teachers model this growth and this thirst in continuing to learn, so will our students. And, this is great work that is continued in our middle school. Any questions about IB yet? Okay. Small group instructions. So, Jackie has been wonderful in bringing to our middle school a little bit more thought around reading. And, our fifth grade has been working in small-group instructional groups. We worked a little bit with Fonsis and Pennell, working a little bit with Scholastic. But, in a nutshell, our kids are in stations, reading text, and becoming good readers. So, it's more on being involved with the text, being thoughtful readers, and being given feedback on that by their teachers individually. I know when I was in middle school, we all opened up a book. We all took turns reading the book. And, I don't know if my teachers ever knew what level of a reader I was. In elementary school, more so, but middle school, certainly don't remember that occurring. Of course, I could be wrong because middle school was a blur for me in seventh and eighth grade. But, it certainly has changed. And, our fifth grade is doing great work with that small-group instruction and, I'll say it, guided reading approach. Our Eureka Math curriculum continues to grow. So, our fifth and sixth grade has used Eureka Math with fidelity over time. We have tremendous math results in our fifth and sixth grade, and we continue to grow those results in seventh and eighth grade. We've had a consultant and a coach come in to work with our seventh and eighth-grade math teachers. We have Eureka Math materials this year. And, it's kind of an approach in which the teachers use their materials. They have online materials, they have workbooks. And, it helps to build a little bit more consistency across the grade levels. And, we're continuing to grow and learn more with that Eureka material in our seventh and eighth grade. I know in a prior board meeting, we talked a little bit about career exploration and the VR headsets. So, our SEL teachers have been utilizing those. It is something that we're continuing to grow with. I won't say that it's consistent in every class, but we are exploring with them in our SEL classes. And, I have most recently been informed that Ms. Ortiz and Ms. Melagirio plan on doing a career fair in the late spring. So, if you remember, we did our first career fair a couple of years ago with Ms. Coleman. And, it was one of my asks, I think last year was too quick because they were brand-new. But, having a couple of years in, it is Ms. Melagirio's first year, but Ms. Ortiz, it's her second year. They plan on reaching out to local community businesses to have them come to our wellness center and share with our students what their careers are and inspire them. It was really tremendous the last time we did it, and we're looking forward to doing it again. Do you want to talk a little bit about Spanish? We are seeing increased sections in Spanish, more so because there is a little bit less of an interest in Mandarin Chinese. And, for those of you who have seen past presentations, with IB, we now offer Spanish or Mandarin in year one, which is sixth grade. So, prior to this, we started our foreign language, except for many, many years ago. We started our foreign language in seventh and eighth grade in the middle school, and now that has filtered down to fifth. And, it is exciting. The way that Ms. Trainer treats those sixth graders, and they're a little bit of larger class sizes, they're like twenty-nine and thirty kids because of the sections we have. But, the kids are full of energy, they're inspired. She really makes her curriculum come to life, and she's presented here to you about that curriculum. Next year, we do have, we've seen a little bit less interest in Mandarin. So, because of that, we will need to increase Spanish sections while decreasing a little bit of that Mandarin option because if we don't run classes of at least ten or more, we don't run that section. So, that's why we're seeing that increase in Spanish in those grades. All right? It's a little bit about our middle school initiatives. Any questions?
Travis, the career exploration, the presentation that we had, Sandoval was his name? That wowed me. And, I hope you're really implementing that at the middle school level. That's so important, and I love the idea of a career fair. When I first started as guidance counselor, I mean, many years ago, I was in charge of that. And, you know, it's a lot of work to contact the doctors, the lawyers, the accountants, the fire people, the EMS people, your police and things. But, once it's done, the kids really get a bird's-eye view of what a particular occupation or many occupations may offer. So, I love that broadening of the horizon. That's great. Also, when is your therapy pup going to be back in the building?
He comes on Friday, so it's on our calendar. He usually comes twice a month. Thank you for stopping in and seeing him.
I missed it, I missed the pup. I love that dog.
Sam came to visit Murphy a few weeks ago, and he opens up his pocket, and he starts handing like one biscuit, two biscuits. After about eight, Sam goes, "Now, this is my last one." And, we start talking for a little bit longer, and he pulls out another one. And, I'm like, "You want to talk about a dog lover? I love dogs as well." The kids come down to Murphy, and all of a sudden, it's coming down to baseline.
It's amazing.
And, animals just have such a calming impact.
They do.
And, even some of the students who are a little bit nervous, the more they're around calm animals, the more they become welcome to it. So, yeah, Murphy's here twice a month. It's on our calendar, but I will send you a special invite. I'll send the board some invite of the dates.
That's great.
If you'd like to come in.
I love visiting.
Quite an experience.
It is, it is. Thank you, thank you, Travis.
Welcome.
So, Travis, question for you. I'm not sure, perhaps this is already happening, but knowing that there's work happening in small-group instruction and reading, which is not typically a middle-school thing, but because of our middle school, including fifth grade, seems highly appropriate that that should continue to happen. It's like a nice bridge into the middle school.
Yeah.
Are there opportunities for middle-school teachers to perhaps go and see elementary teachers, conduct small groups? And, also, are there opportunities for them to collaborate around math? Because they're using the Eureka Squared program over at the elementary school, right? And, so, just in thinking about the bridge from one building to another, are there opportunities for that? And, then, thinking of the Middle Years Program and how it feeds into our IB program, are there opportunities for teachers to collaborate with high-school teachers on, "Hey, like, what has this been like for you? What are some things that you learned the hard way that we could learn, you know, faster?" So, just opportunities for cross-collaboration.
So, first, let me start with that small-group approach to reading. So, we have done that in the past already. The thing is, with the guided reading approach, we're also now looking at the science of reading, right?
Right.
So, our teachers are going out and attending these workshops at BOSI's to learn more about that progression. But, we've been doing this approach for a couple of years now. So, our teachers have already done that. We've actually had coaches come in and model for them and given them feedback, including two weeks ago with Ms. Zeca. We actually went into our 8-1-1 class and were able to model it in that classroom. And, that was tremendous for our teachers to see. Because if you can model that approach in a class like that, you can model that approach in any classroom. And, it was really eye-opening and tremendous for our teachers to see. With Eureka Math, we've been using Eureka Math in fifth and sixth grade with fidelity for years.
Yep.
So, that kind of bridge from the elementary school, I'd like to say we continue that progression in a positive way. But, we're always open to visiting and seeing what that looks like. And, the last piece, with IB, I don't want to get confused with the diploma program because the diploma program is vastly different than the Middle Years Program. The diploma program is very intense, very rigorous. For those who, I believe there's something, I don't want to speak to it, but there's like a twenty-to-thirty-page paper. It's like a dissertation that they write. I'm sure it's the wrong term. But, it's very intense, very different, very like choice-oriented in a sense. The Middle Years Program, which is starting in technically year one, which is sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, our fifth grade, which is year zero, they build the foundation for it. So, we're actually spreading it upwards. Yep. To which I think our ninth and tenth grade is starting to look at it. So, our approach would be them coming to us eventually to see the way we're implementing it.
Very good.
So, it's kind of growing this way. Where the DP program in eleventh and twelfth grade existed.
Right.
We're now filtering upwards. So, I will tell you, our fifth-grade teachers are super excited for the verification visit. DP, or I'm sorry, the MYP visitors have informed me they're really looking at year one, two, and three. So, I don't want to upset our fifth-grade teachers because they're doing great work, but they're really not under the spotlight as much as our year one, two, and three people are. But, they're doing tremendous work as well. And, I mean, you were at the Student of the Month Breakfast this morning. And I mean, you were at the student of the month breakfast this morning. And some of our students are nominated for those user profile attributes. And, you know, when we start to embody it in everything that we do, it just comes naturally. And we're getting there.
Right. And I think that one of the differences here that needs to be highlighted about the middle years program is that it's for all. And that while at the high school level, it is a choice of whether you do a diploma program or take one or two IB classes or five if you want to, that the model of thinking that is, that IB contributes to is being set as the foundation for all students, which is really a global standardized way of thinking. Much outside, much more outside the box than what education in the United States is used to. To Jackie's point earlier, we are moving in a direction that the state is going, but we got there way before they did, right? And so it's really exciting to see that work happening. You know, I think it would be important for the high school teachers of those 11th and 12th graders currently to kind of have an understanding of what does that foundation look like, right? And what are they going to be coming with that might be different? And then at the same time, you know, having the conversation of ninth and 10th and how we deal with that gap from what's happening in eighth grade versus what's going to happen again in 11th grade with the IB philosophy, right? But you can see the language starting to permeate the buildings. And I think that's really important. I did notice that this morning at the breakfast that students and teachers, they're all speaking the same language about the attributes of an IB learner. And I think that's really important. And it's just, it's grown even in the last few years tremendously. So it's an incredible amount of work. I had the privilege of last year attending some steering committee meetings where they were putting some documents together, getting ready for this review. And this is not a process that happens from day, you know, day to day, from today to tomorrow. This is like years of work. And when I tell you the wordsmithing that goes into ensuring that those documents say what we mean and that we can mean what we say is very intense. And people have done a significant amount of work that is highly laborious to make sure that it's right for kids first and that it can be supported by teachers with the right kinds of support. So I just want to thank your team for all the work that they have done and for your leadership in the program.
Thank you. And I truly want to thank all of our teachers. One of the areas in which too, that I didn't expand upon, that I think we kind of have an oversight at times, like Sam talked about career exploration. So part of this process in year three is the community project. So we've projected what that community project can look like. And it's actually kids branching out to the community to choose an issue that they find and propose a solution. And either work with or hypothetically propose that solution to it. And that goes along with community service hours. National Junior Honor Society, we require some sort of voluntary participation. And that can be used towards that as well. Because we want our future leaders branching out to our community. Because education is not in isolation and shouldn't be seen as a bubble. They're going to be our future, they're going to be going out. And we want that connection with our community.
Great.
I have one question. How many students are continuing to take Mandarin now that you're offering Spanish?
So as of right now, I believe we have 14 students in eighth grade. And it might be 11 students in eighth grade and 14 students in seventh grade. So those kids will transition through to high school. Last year, I think the interest in Mandarin from our fifth graders going into sixth was like seven. So we chose to run those sections of Spanish instead.
So as an administrative team, Mandarin, the current numbers and its future is something that we are continually discussing to decide whether or not it's a program we can continue to sustain just based upon student interest. We would have no issue sustaining it if students were interested. But what we're seeing, once they get into high school, is a significant attrition rate. And then we end up with really small class sizes. So that's something that Jackie, myself, Travis, and Matt have discussed several times. And we're developing a plan, which will obviously be shared with the Board of Education once we're done. And we'll be making a recommendation to the board regarding what the future of that program looks like when we have all that information. We're really, at this point, exploring what our options are.
So Travis, you know, we always love when we see students. But when we can't see students, it's great to see a principal who is so enthused about seeing students. So I thank you for sharing, you know, the things that you see and your leadership in the middle school in kind of pulling them together and giving them a shared vision. Because I think that that can't but help pull everybody up. So thank you.
Thank you. If you ever want to come to the middle school and have some energy, come to, come see me. I'll give you a tour. There is nothing like a middle school transition. When that bell goes off, it's lively. And they bring that energy to their classrooms. And I love it, it's every day. Like you have to understand middle schoolers to be in middle school. And like you had mentioned with Margaret and how she knows all of our students, I take great pride in knowing all of our students. It's really a pleasure to be in a smaller district. Because literally, we talk about baseball, we talk about academics, we talk about, you know, fishing. Like it's really nice to connect with middle school kids because it is a very changing time in their life.
It is. You can see that there's a nice balance of the structure that they need at this age and also the love and the support with that transition that they need at this age. So from one middle school educator to another, thank you so much. We are going to talk about that 29 students in Spanish conversation, right? Because that can't happen.
No, that won't happen moving forward.
I'm sure that if, you know, there are changes made to the offerings, that that will probably support those numbers. But kudos to our kids for wanting to learn Spanish. I mean, to want to learn any other language is an amazing feat. So exciting work.
And by the way, we have a tremendous scheduling team at the middle school. It can't be done in isolation. The teacher team that comes together to reflect on the prior year's schedule and programs is tremendous. And we take all that input into consideration and then look at our staff. And it's a puzzle every year. Not as much as a puzzle as the high school. But it is more of a puzzle as it goes up. And I think the more that we continue to offer, the more chances our kids have, such as research, which is new to them, such as SEL with our school counselors running those classes. So we're trying to be innovative and creative and offer different things. And it really exposes kids to other avenues that they can pursue in the future.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you Travis.
I have to apologize on Mr. Mello's behalf. He really wanted to be here tonight, but he had an important scheduling conflict that he just was not able to make it. So I'll present on his behalf tonight for some of our high school initiatives for next year, looking ahead to incorporating Tigers 101 course for our ninth graders. This is a really valuable opportunity for our students to be explicitly taught those approaches to learning that are so important to the NYPD program, the middle years program, that's already been started in the middle school and is coming to the high school in grades nine and 10. So the middle years program is actually a five-year program. Year one is sixth grade, year two is seventh, three, eighth, and so on. So as we look ahead to making sure the pathway to success and opportunity to take part in the diploma program if a student so wishes, we are building through the framework of working with all students, getting that IB experience from grades five through 10. And then they have the option, and even in 11th grade, all juniors take the language and literacy, literature course. So as they enter high school, this is almost like a freshman foundations where the students are going to come and learn very explicitly about research, about financial literacy, about managing themselves, being aware of others. And those are all incorporated into those approaches to learning along with many other pieces. So the Tigers 101 course is something that the teachers have been working on this year in their monthly PD hour. They've all kind of contributed a lesson or two to the scope and sequence of the NYPD approaches to learning. And they are going to be teaching the students explicitly, almost like executive function skills. And as you see later on down, that executive function strategies are going to be important to our teachers, for our students. Because we do notice that, you know, post pandemic and beyond, and for many other reasons, whether it's social media or just how society is, students need better self-management training. They need better support in their working memory and their organization goal setting. And so executive function has emerged as something that teachers are really interested in. We started this year with some of our encore special area teachers like PE and art, giving them time in PD hour to learn more about executive function, what it is and how to support students who seem to be struggling in that area. And that will continue on. So between the approaches to learning work and the executive function work, bringing those together to really help our students manage themselves and be their best self and learn quite a bit. In addition, we're working on that middle years program candidacy launch, which incorporates training, curriculum writing, helping the teachers. We'll have a launch day in our superintendent conference days in August coming up. So these are all things that are part of this program, part of making it successful. We've already spent time sending teachers to high schools to visit, to learn from other high school teachers that are teaching what they would teach in the grades they teach, navigating APs, navigating scheduling complications, all those things. So they've visited other high schools in our area. Some, a group of teachers went out to training in September. We plan to send more teachers out for additional training. In the NYPD, every content area has to have at least one teacher trained. In some of our content areas, it may be important, in particular in the high school, because you have different types of content areas. It's not just science, it's chemistry or it's physics. We may have to send more than one teacher out so that they can really master what they need to teach. But either way, we have these focus areas for the high school. You'll notice they are just a few. We are wanting to get really good at a few things and do them really well before we expand onto other items. And that was the success of the DP program relied on that pacing and, you know, really keeping, being mindful of what time is available to do this kind of work, to do this kind of professional learning. We only have a handful of superintendent conference days. We have a monthly PD hour, which every so often we have to incorporate, you know, an SED update or a shell training or whatever it might be. So we have only a handful of hours, only a handful of superintendent conference days. And we still have to acknowledge all the other things we have to do as teachers and as people who belong to New York State education and have to follow up with anything that they give us to do. So we're trying to give our teachers fewer initiatives so that they can really focus on the good work that they're going to be doing. Any questions?
I think it's great that you're including the teachers in the change and having them each give their input for the 101 course. I think that's wonderful.
Thank you.
It's a great idea, Mr. Mello had, it was really terrific. So for district initiatives, we have a lot of K-12 opportunities. We've introduced the MTSS team to the board last month, I believe, when we also introduced the Future of Education team. That work will be ongoing into next year as well. So this is something we're planning for. Whether that includes adding learning time and committee meeting time for the teachers to be able to be together, learn more, grow more, give them their input more. That'll be really important. We started a K-12 writing committee last spring. That work will be continuing. Our goal is to have a K-12 writing continuum completed by the end of this school year. Hats off to Jamie Zeca, who is helping me to lead this initiative. She has a wealth of experience in writing for the secondary grades. And so she stepped up immediately and said, I would love to be part of this and to help you co-lead this. So she organizes the meetings, she gets people, you know, starting on the continuum or whatever we're working on in the moment. She brings research, she brings articles. I plan to bring her to a board meeting like I did with our colleagues for MTSS and for the Future of Education so that I can not only show you student writing, but also tell you a little bit more about what we do in that writing team. We're continuing to support that VR career exploration between the Trek app that Santiago spoke about last month and the VR headsets. I don't know if I mentioned this last time, but I witnessed, or read an article rather, I should say, a judge using that headset to determine a self-defense case by putting themselves in the position of the defendant and trying to understand why he would engage the way he did, given the circumstances. So they recreated the scenario virtually. And the judge put this headset on to be in that person's shoes and try to better understand. So this is going beyond our walls once again, right? While this is great for career exploration, this type of technology is going to be used in other sectors of the world that they're going to engage with. So I think that's just, I'm glad we're, once again, on the cutting edge of something new and different that's giving our students career experience, but at the same time, might be something that they encounter in law school or beyond. So, yeah. We also are looking toward, I really want to thank the PVEF for their help with this. This was a grant that they provided to us that we are still working on. It's a process, it doesn't happen overnight. But this picture here is not of a dog we own currently. But we are working on obtaining a facility dog for the elementary school. We've interviewed a few candidates who expressed interest in being the primary dog handler. This is the person who brings the dog home every night and it becomes part of their family at home. But then they also bring it to work every day. So this is a big responsibility, someone really has to be committed to it. Someone really has to be invested. And they have to also recognize that it is technically Putnam Valley's dog. So it will stay with us wherever they may go until such time as the dog necessarily needs to retire. But it's...
You're right, Sam.
Maybe, anyway. But so there are primary handlers and secondary handlers. This is important because we will be sending people, a team, once we establish the primary handler, we have to send a team with this dog to, or to the training site to train with the dog that the organization selects for us. And they learn the different commands, how to utilize the dog, how to walk the dog around the building, when the dog needs breaks, the dog needs its own space somewhere. It's going to have to like be in Margaret's office or Carly's office to have its break time. It's going to have to go outside a couple of times. So, you know, there's a lot involved in this. And the dogs aren't automatically ready. There's not like a puppy sitting somewhere waiting for us to scoop them up and just take them home with us, right? It's not like adopting a dog or even purchasing from a breeder. This is really high level. You have to be a match to be the primary handler. The school has to have a full plan for the dog. And we have to be committed to what the organization is expecting. And there's a waitlist. You know, there are people who are using them for individual needs, special needs. And there are schools like us trying to obtain the dog. So once we select our primary handler, we'll be able to put in the application. They'll be interviewed by the organization. And then the organization may even do a home visit, especially if they have other pets at home. So...
Do you have volunteers for the elementary position on staff right now?
We have several volunteers for secondary handlers. We are currently interviewing for the primary handler. Yes. So once we interview all the folks who have expressed interest, we will select someone to begin the process.
Outstanding, yeah.
It's a very exciting process, it is a long process. I'm finding there's all sorts of things I still need to learn about how it happens, how it works, where it's best suited. But really, our vision is for this to be a social emotional support for our students, for our staff, for our community. What I know about other districts who have this program in place, this dog serves the purpose of welcoming a scared kindergartner on the first day of school into the school, gets them out of their parents' arms necessarily and into the building. It's been useful in that way. It's also gone to a second grade classroom to be read to. It's sat in a psychologist's office when a student is having a hard time and needs to be de-escalated. It's de-escalated staff by putting its paws on shoulders and actually bringing a person down to calm down if there was an incident or something traumatic happened. So I can't say enough about the feeling and the mood in a room when a dog is present, whether it's an office, whether it's a school building, whether it's a classroom. There is a very different vibe in those spaces when the dog is present. And all those, you know, fears folks may have about, you know, allergies or whether or not children will be scared, those are navigated around. The company, the organization teaches us a little bit about what other schools do and how that works. You know, they also train us in ways in which we can obtain volunteer groomers and volunteer vets so that those costs are alleviated. So we're looking into trying to find a vet and a groomer who may offer those services pro bono for the dog. So, you know, there's a lot involved. But this has been just such a great journey, this past six months that we've been on trying to establish which organization to choose, why we would choose that organization, who wants to be involved. So like I said, we have lots of people who want to have the dog as a secondary handler. But that investment of time and commitment to being a primary handler is a big deal. And it's a big deal for us too. We want the right person who wants to be with us long-term, who understands the purpose of the dog, is willing to follow the routines that the dog needs in order to remain... We want the right person who wants to be with us long term, who understands the purpose of the dog, is willing to follow the routines that the dog needs in order to remain a facility dog at home. So it's it's not insurmountable, but it is, it's a heavy lift and it's it's on its way.
It's worth it.
It is worth it.
Are you allowing any teachers to interview for that primary handler position, including classroom teachers?
In elementary school.
How is it gonna work to go from classroom to classroom?
So that's where the secondary handlers come in.
Okay.
So let's say, you know, a teacher, Teacher A brings the dog to work.
Okay.
Right. They may drop them off with Psychologist A or Principal B or, you know, whoever it may be in the room or in the building that has been trained as a secondary handler will be that person who can walk the dog around or bring it to point A or B, and there will be multiples. So if you know, the social emotional counseling suite needs it for the day, that's where it'll be for the day. But again, we'll have its break, we'll have its time to go outside, all those things.
They are great healers. They are.
They certainly are.
They feel the emotions.
So we will continue our K twelve E N L support. We are continuing always to look at our numbers, see how we're serving our students best, see what kind of translation devices we can use to better serve them in the classroom when an E N L teacher is not present, or even when they are. We have students who come to us with very little English language proficiency and getting them, I mean, I can't speak highly enough about the E N L department and the ways in which they have moved students from that very entering and emerging position in their proficiency all the way to commanding in just a matter of a few years. It really is very impressive and they work very hard. So hats off to them. They they are doing wonderful work. And we continue to look at what they need to be successful, whether it's curricular materials, whether it's devices and so on. And we're increasing our parent learning opportunities. We're always looking for ways to connect with our community. I'll talk a little bit about something we did in the fall that we're gonna do again in the spring. And it's really just, it's been really nice to have our parents involved more. So let me actually get to those. But first, our budgetary implications, because all of those great things we just talked about, obviously incur costs. And so whether it's curriculum writing and I B training for the M Y P program that we're concentrating on, continued I B training for the diploma program. Every few years, they change the curriculum to keep it fresh and reflected on and new and revised. So the teachers in the high school need to go back out for training for that new curriculum to learn about it, see what they need to tweak about their practice. So training, A I redesign, A I has changed the game in education. And so now we're looking at how teachers can redesign their curriculum to possibly incorporate a platform that we've been looking at as the future of education team. Or just to redesign what their expectations are of the lesson or unit they're teaching so that it can't be so easy to just use A I to get it done. A student can go on Chat G P T right now and say, hey, write an essay about the Civil War for me, and that's not what we want them to do. That means the the idea, the assessment is low level. It's not challenging enough if it's that easy to be done by A I. So how do we redesign our lessons to navigate around this and have our students be really good critical thinkers, ask good questions, form their own responses based on their research and their their opinions and what they draw from research? So these are things that we're thinking about in terms of our teachers and the type of support they need. We need folks to come in and model, demo some of the things that we're talking about today, like small group instruction or math instruction in a particularly new curriculum. So we might have a coach or a consultant come through to go into the classroom, sit, model for the teachers. Our leaders do that too. They will support them. So that's really a benefit in our Putnam Valley. You'll see how enthusiastic our leaders are about being, you know, in the work and they're up up to their elbows in participating in the wonderful work that's happening in our classrooms as we continue to refresh, redesign and innovate our curriculum. Materials and platforms, you know, whether it's translation devices or like a school A I, which I'll mention later. These are things that we're looking at to enhance our programs. So those are things. Mr. Webb, for example, our athletic director and I were talking about ways in which we can help our phys ed department enhance their instruction. And there happened to be a platform he's very familiar with from his former district. So we spoke about it. We met with them. And we determined that this might be a good opportunity for our instructors because students can monitor their own data, they can monitor their wellness, whether or not they're progressing in their physical activity. So the more data we can get for our students to improve themselves and that they can be involved in understanding their progression in whatever grade level that may be, whatever content area that may be, that's something we always look for. So something like that would be part of our materials and our platforms. And I did mention already, our science of reading, our M Y P, our D P programs all need that training to come with them. Any questions? And we do all of this while we maintain pace with N I C E D, who never fails to come up with new fun things for us to do. The latest N I C E D initiative is the Blue Ribbon graduation measures, ways in which N I C E D is looking at and asking schools to rethink how we assess students in preparation and what graduation pathways they have. This is relatively new. It's not something we're starting to share with our teachers just yet, because like we said, we're very conscious of having them concentrate on a few things at a time. But this is something that the state has given us a few deadlines and timelines for. We do know the state does sometimes change their minds, so that could happen too. But part of that is something I mentioned earlier, that profile of a graduate, which is right here. And you're going to see some of the same language on that wheel. You're going to see some of the same language we have in our I B learner profile, critical thinker, thinkers is an attribute, communicators, communicators is an attribute. We are there. That is what we are doing right now. So this will not be a heavy lift, the profile of a graduate. And then, you know, I'll show you something in a minute about the timeline that they're looking toward, but they are working towards one diploma. Right now, we have local regions and advanced regions. They're phasing that out. They're going toward one diploma with seals attached, you know, the seal of biliteracy, the seal of civic civic readiness, excuse me. And those kinds of additions, those special seals can be added to a student's diploma, but they're looking to say, one of their, you know, questions is, well, we know we value regions, we value assessments, but how many do you want to do? How many do you need to do? And if you're doing alternative assessments instead, are those alternative assessments rigorous? Are they really making sure to assess students in a way that makes sense, that's holding them accountable for their learning? So they're they're trying to transition right now in this way of reducing the assessments that act, ask for memorization and, you know, kind of knowledge facts and more toward critical thinking and problem solving. So it's a good move. It's it's not a bad thing. And like I said, through our I B work, we're already on the move toward what they're expecting. But more to come on this. I'll do a presentation if the board would like later in the year to really dive in. So what it's asking, what the Blue Ribbon measures, the recommendations are from the state and more on that. Our computer based testing phases are almost coming to a close. We're in the fourth grade year this year. And next year will be third grade, and then all of our three through eight grades will be on computer based tests. So we've, you know, some schools have decided to go all in. The middle school, for example, decided to go all in once they experienced it last year. It does lift a heavy organization load on the administrators and the testing coordinators, because there's so much paperwork to be done with the paper based testing. Let me recognize our third graders are young. They needed more time with keyboarding skills. We wanted to make sure they were really ready. We had to obviously bring fourth grade on board this year, so we held out to make sure our third grade could move forward for next year, and we implemented keyboarding in the classrooms last year, or maybe it was two years ago now, because we knew we were getting students ready to go to the middle school where they would have to in fifth grade do our computer based testing. We are, exciting news, the New York State nominee for the Green Ribbon Award, which would make us a green ribbon school, should the United States Department of Education move us forward in the process. All the United States Department of Education wants is a few documents from us, but we're working on that. It's due on January thirty first, and we got the email last week. So we are making this happen. We're gonna get all of those documents in. And we're gonna keep our fingers crossed that we can call ourselves a green ribbon school sometime around April. But that is a U S, a United States Department of Education initiative, and every state nominates a school or a couple of schools to receive the ribbon. So if we do our due diligence and get things done, we're pretty hopeful that we will be able to receive that green ribbon.
It's only a couple?
In some cases, it's only one.
Wow.
And it is a huge deal that we are nominated for this. So much so that someone said something to me about it today before I actually even knew about it, which was really exciting. So I'm so glad it's on the screen tonight.
Saving it to unveil today.
Yes. So the word is out there that Putnam Valley is on the map for its
I'm so glad.
green initiatives.
No, it's, and I really have to give it, give a nod to Dave Spittle, who worked beside me for a couple of weeks, really had most of the information I needed. I was really more of a scribe and helping to get everything organized with him. But I want to say he really was a huge help in getting this over the finish line and was very, very proud to get the news. We were both very proud. We were very excited about this. So it was a, it was an undertaking, a little bit of an undertaking, brought committee together to talk about what's out there for wellness in the district, what's out there for sustainability in the district and, you know, what can you get me about the food service? What can you get? So we really, we kind of had to pull a lot of people together, have a lot of conversations about what we're doing so that we could put it in our narrative. And we got it. So very excited about that.
Amazing.
And then we have our new high school science assessments coming. We're not doing them this year. We're doing them next year. These science assessments also come with their investigations. So our teachers need to go for training for that, need to get the equipment for that. You know, the same thing we talked about last year when the other grades were taking those on. But that'll be, the actual assessments will be next year. Some schools are starting them this year. We decided to wait until next year. Give our teachers a chance to see what actually happens with them. I think maybe the state learned a little bit about their previous rollout and maybe chose to do this a little differently, give people the option to phase it in as opposed to just jump in. So that's what's happening with high school science right now. As I mentioned earlier, our diploma requirements by cohort, this is their current timeline. And what they hope to see is that as of twenty seven, twenty eight, we have one diploma, redefine seals, new credit requirements. And basically just kind of sunsetting everything that's happened before in terms of graduation requirements. It's not a bad thing. It's a good thing, but it does take time and work. And we'll do what we can with the time we have and the focus areas that we have, that we have to prioritize. So we're doing this I B work. We've been doing this I B work for several years. We don't want to, you know, try to put too much on our teachers at one time. And so we're gonna think about very thoughtfully and carefully how to do the pieces they want from us, like the financial literacy requirement and the climate requirement. We're gonna have to figure out how all that happens. But we're already in conversations about it and having some ideas. So I can do a deep dive a little later this year with the board on what that actually says, what the Blue Ribbon Commission came up with as recommendations and what the state is actually adopting, has actually adopted. We still continue to empower our students to lead. There are so many opportunities to hear our student voices, whether it's the tiger streak in the high school or now something new they are doing called Bold and Brownies. Or, you know, our student councils, our safety patrol. We have student leaders everywhere. We have student leaders running our stage crew, which is amazing. We love our Theater Works program and the great work Susie Cummings does with those students. So they really, they run the show and they are fantastic. So there are so many ways in which we have our students leading for the district. We really try to give as many opportunities as possible to our teachers to lead as well, because they are wonderful educators and true leaders. We offer a lot of professional learning to support their growth, their instructional growth, as well as their growth within the initiatives and goals that we have as a district. Providing leadership opportunities, for example, you have Ms. Carrie Burdette at the elementary school, who is our scholastic coordinator and does a phenomenal job leading P D hour sessions on writing revolution or scholastic or, you know, Kristi McCarty, who modeled Hegarty for us here. She also models it for her colleagues. Teresa Borick, who is modeling foundations. When new teachers come on board, they don't, our students do not miss a step in foundations because we have somebody like Teresa trained to facilitate for those folks. And we actually had this happen just a couple of months ago, I think it was, with our new E N L teacher, Barbara Barrow. And also one of our new special education teachers, they actually sat for a day. Margaret was able to find coverage for them. They sat for a day. And they learned the foundations for their grade levels with Teresa. So she is just such a great asset for us to be able to have in the elementary school so that our students don't miss a beat in that work. We have teachers welcoming in, you'll see that second picture is a teacher in second grade working with the foundations coach to co teach in foundations. So while he's modeling for the teacher, they're doing a foundation lessons together. So he may jump in and add a feedback, add a piece of feedback to her while they're doing it. He'll show her how to cut, where she can cut time and do less in the the letter drill, the sound drill, so that she can focus on other parts of the lesson that might be more important for her students. So these are opportunities we're giving our our teachers and our administrators too. Mr. Fiori and Mr. Lee were able to lead a school A I session in superintendent conference day for our teachers. That's an A I program. And it was standing room only. They, there was not a place to sit because all the teachers wanted to learn from from Mike and from Keith. So it was really great to see. So we're empowering each other, our teachers in every way we can, and helping our teachers move forward. We are always encouraging our community members to be involved in our programs. We have a district advisory council. We have steering committees for each of our buildings. We have our wonderful P T A, P V E F and P T S A, and the more they bring ideas to us and the more we can participate or partner with them, the better. We'd love to do that with them. Our parent learning opportunities right here featured is that cell phones and your child that we did in November that we will be repeating in March. Cell phones have become a very big conversation. I know a few of us are going to Tarrytown to learn a little bit more. I know Governor Holkel released her guidance recently. So we're just all trying to learn together on what's best for kids and do the research on how we can help our students. And so we brought families in to do that with us, and we had a panel of mental health experts. So they received a brief training on mental health in general, but also how cell phones impact what the research is. And then the panel of social workers and our Putnam County mental health leaders, they sat and answered questions from the audience, which was awesome for our parents because they could ask what was on their minds. And other parents were learning alongside them and asking their own questions. So it was really a community feel. Our Tigers keepers in the high school is a way for our parents to be involved and give voice at the high school level. And again, our holiday potluck in December, which was such a success, thanks to our wonderful new community liaisons, Judy and Maria. They just worked so hard to put that together in a matter of a month. They came up, they were appointed, they came up with the idea and it launched, and we had so many families come out. It was really terrific. I don't know if, you know, Crystal, if you wanted to say anything more about that, but I know you brought a wonderful dish that was selling fast.
Yeah, I was so excited about bringing rice and beans that night. That was like so much fun. And it was even better that I didn't have to take it home at the end of the night. So that was great. No, but it was really just a beautiful night. You know, the the holiday season is always so crazy and challenging for people to do anything at that point, but to see the number of people that came out that brought food, right? You know, a lot of people don't necessarily understand this depending on your culture, but when you're asked to bring something that represents who you are as a person and as a family, it's really, it's an honor to be able to share that with other people. And so I know that my daughter's friend, you know, brought in like fifteen dishes that she, her mom had made. They were so excited to share food from their culture and my kids tried food that they've never eaten before. Their friends had rice and beans for the first time, you know, and so it was just a beautiful night of community. When I tell you this team of teachers and Jackie, they thought of everything from cookie decorating to how mu, how many plates we would need to activities throughout the night, to mingling and really helping people connect. It was a beautiful time, and I hope that that event just continues to grow. And and that we do more of them because it brings people together and you can meet new faces. So great job on that.
Thank you. And you'll see, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, please. No, I'm mind separate from that.
You'll see a picture later of three of the community partners that were there, Neighbors Link and so forth. And they were there to provide services to families who needed them.
Sun River Health was there as well. Yep.
Yeah, it was really nice to be able to bring that feature to it as well. So it wasn't just necessarily folks dining and breaking bread, which is always lovely, but there were actual resources there for those families who spoke both languages. So it was really great. You were gonna say?
I was gonna say, I'm really happy you're bringing the cellphone presentation back because I had a last minute conflict that I, and I really had wanted to go. So I'm really happy you're offering it again for the parents who weren't able to go that first time.
We sent an email to folks like the next day and we said, can you guys come back in March? So we're trying to assemble the same panel and the same speakers so that we can kind of duplicate what we did. But now we have even more guidance and more information. So it might be a little tweaked, but we're very excited to bring that back because it really seemed very popular and helpful to families.
I also want to encourage everybody in the community, if they want to have a say in the schools, to join the steering committees. I am, it's my first year doing it. I didn't even know there were any last year. But this year I'm on the middle school one, and we went over the code of conduct. Um, but this year I'm on the middle school one and we went over the um, code of conduct. Um, we read through it and you really get to have some input on big, important decisions in the school. So um, I really recommend that people who want to have a say, join those steering committees.
Thank you. And PV leads beyond our walls in our community. We lead in many ways. We have teachers who lead all sorts of in-service here in PV, but also outside of PV, uh, in multiple teacher centers, uh, they lead courses. Um, this is just a, a few I'm naming, but there are more teachers who lead teacher center courses. Uh, Dr. Podesta leads the PNW, Putnam Northern Westminster BOCs, the PNW principals forum still, and she also serves as a Sanes trustee for our region and she helps to coordinate the regional leadership institute, which we held here in our high school last year, last summer, and we're holding it again in our high school. It was that successful. It was huge in number, but people also were just wowed by our building, wowed by our spaces, wowed by what we offer and uh, that was really nice. So hats off to Margaret for leading that. Um, our IB teachers are hosting Gibbs Guild of IB Schools. They're hosting Gibbs events here in the building, inviting teachers who teach their same content area from other places, sometimes as far as Long Island. Sometimes these are virtual meetings, so maybe they're in another state and they're hosting these meetings so that they can really unpack their content area, work together and learn from each other. That's a wonderful thing we do here. Dr. Payne is still leading the PNW AP network. Um, Ms. Zeca, she serves on and, she served on an AP panel, I should say, for Bank Street Future Leaders class. Um, all principals led workshop sessions in superintendent conference day in August and they were all well attended. Folks love learning from their principals. Um, and it doesn't necessarily have to be on a content area or something the building is doing. I believe Travis did classroom management skills and strategies and the room was packed. So um, it was really nice. It was really nice to see all of our leaders jumping in with both hands to lead during that uh, important time when we're welcoming all of our staff back. And I should have you know that all of our staff attends that first superintendent conference day. They go to workshops, they choose workshops they want to go to. Um, they attend the speaker in the morning or uh, our opening ceremonies, whatever they may be. Um, they're part of the superintendent conference day. It's not just teaching staff, but it's all staff. Um, and the same thing with our new employee orientation. Anyone who is new to our district joins our new employee orientation together to learn about our district. While not everything we do during those three days is pertinent to everyone in the room, um, we find things that make sense for those groups and we start to uh, find ways to incorporate all new faculty and all new staff to our um, welcoming events. Um, we submitted and are nominated for Green Ribbon Schools designation. Um, I am the, uh, was tapped this year to be the professional development chair for the American Association of Personnel Administrators. Um, and I also serve on the planned pilot professional learning uh, team for New York State for NICED. Um, this is the team that is looking at those alternative ways uh, for graduation measures and instruction. So I have a little bit of detail I can share about that when I present on the graduation measures in general, but essentially I joined these meetings to talk about the professional learning requirements the state will need to consider in order to help teachers and leaders achieve these goals they want to set one day for our, our colleagues. Um, I originally joined the program because international baccalaureate was one of the items. Now they call it uh, inquiry-based learning so that they weren't tied to the brand name of IB because IB is very sensitive about its brand name. Um, and uh, I'm sure they wanted to allow other programs to be considered by schools, but um, that was why I originally joined and I stayed on because it really is important for me to be involved and understand where the state is going with all of this work and how we can inform them on the best ways to go about this work without burdening and overwhelming teachers. So, um, and administrators too, I want to say. And uh, Dr. Luft is the section one superintendent representative for, how do you say this? The New York State, is it physical health, the physical education and health?
New York State Public High School Athletic Association.
There we go, Athletic Association. Um, and he is receiving an award tomorrow night. He might not have wanted me to say that out loud, but.
Yay! Congratulations.
So Dr. Luft is also leading regionally in many ways. And what award is this? What award are you receiving?
I'll let you know tomorrow.
Might not be public information yet, maybe I wasn't supposed to share. Um, we are continuing to increase our E and L support. Very important to us as a community that all of our kids, all of our students and families feel supported. So um, as I mentioned, that's that picture of the three partners. We had come to our community liaison's holiday potluck. Um, our community liaisons are hard at work, um, contacting families, getting them out to events, planning events in other buildings, offering to come to events in other buildings so that they can be translators, they could be a support. Um, they are, they have hit the ground running and they are just fantastic ladies. I can't say enough about them and how enthusiastic they are, how many ideas they have and how many ways in which they are contacting families directly to make sure they know something's happening and that they can come and that there will be translation provided for them. So uh, that's been very important to us. Of course, innovation of all kinds means the right tools. So as we continue to expand the career exploration, we may seek to purchase a few more, more of those VR headsets for our uh, counselors to utilize. It's really hard to have a class of say twenty students and only six headsets. You can imagine what that looks like for the counselor trying to manage all those bodies who want to be virtually working in, you know, a field or on a, you know, welding something or whatever, you know, flying a plane. There's so many things they could do with those headsets, so they're all eager to get on them, but there's only a few to go around right now. Um, so we want to purchase a few more of those. Thanks again to the PVEF for their grants, uh, that we're able to support that work. Um, we will reach out to them again, but of course, you know, we're continuing to grow such a program and that app track that comes with it, that allows them to uh, work their way with their hedgehog into different career paths and see what's required of that career. Um, additional iPads for E and L support. Our students have identified that the Microsoft translation app on the iPad is, helps them learn the easiest. Our teachers say the same thing too. Um, it helps them to communicate. They have their way of communicating with the student and the student then has a way of reading and understanding what's being told in their preferred language. So uh, I think that's just terrific and we're going to continue to do that. And of course, we want to continue to communicate with our families through translation devices. So for any staff that's not bilingual or doesn't have direct access, uh, whether it's joining ProPO, which is a platform we use, it's a phone number you can dial and get translation immediately, or Pocket Talk or Timekettle, there's a number of devices out there now that are helping to facilitate this translation that our students need. So these are just some of the innovation tools that we are looking for uh, purchasing next year to be able to continue our programs and continue to innovate. That's all. Any questions?
When do you sleep?
I was thinking that same thing.
Um, I, you know, I do, believe it or not. I sleep and I dream of things and then I wake up and I talk to love and I say, can we do this?
The sign of a true administrator. Uh, no, but I think the, the grander of what has been presented tonight is just so evident. Um, all of the things that fall under the umbrella of curriculum and, and instruction. And to not only be able to have a team of people that make that work happen and have a hand on it and all of the facets of it, but you know the work integrally. And I think that that's really important. Um, you can speak to any of it at any time. I have literally watched Jackie pivot at the last minute when an IB uh, professional like was stuck on a plane and was not able to get here in time and she had to deliver a PD the next day on something she was learning herself and she did it and she did a marvelous job. Um, you really are a gift to our community. So thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. You're very kind.
One, uh, well, two things that I just want to mention, a highlight for me in the past couple of weeks was um, the, the number of parents that showed up to our last PTA meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, was very well attended. People asked really good questions and that's what our community needs to do. When people have questions, they should come to the forums that are provided through the PTA, through uh, the district. If there are other places where we can offer those forums, please let us know how we can do that to get the right information to the right people at the right time, I think is really important. Um, and people ask questions and they got answers and that was really important. And one of the highlights for me was that we had a Spanish-speaking family come. And it was the first time truthfully that I've seen a Spanish-speaking family come to a PTA meeting and I was just enthralled. Um, I had the grander, the other grand privilege of translating for them that night and they were able to really understand what it is that we were talking about. And so it was, um, it was just really nice to see. Um, question about newer staff, I'm sure that there is a plan in place, but just so that the public can know a little bit about this, when new teachers are hired, uh, let's say to the high school for example. And I know that PD is always continuous and um, especially with the IB program, we have to make sure that we're updating our curriculum and, and all of those needs, but for the general understanding of what we do in Put Valley, how we teach, how are those new teachers supported and trained, um, so that they're never falling through the cracks when everybody else has already been trained?
Sure. So I can give some examples um, of ways in which, depending on where a, a new teacher is, which building and what initiatives they're, or content area they're in. Um, if we have a new teacher join third grade, for example, um, not only do they need to receive that foundation support from someone like Teresa, but they'll need to go out to Science 21 training. They'll need to have collaborative time, which they have built into their schedule with their team to learn from their team. They're given a mentor, that mentor works with them for the entire year. And then there's a head building mentor that they can continue to go to beyond year one to um, address any concerns, to help guide them through, oh, I have this email, I have to write to a parent, help me out. So there is a head building mentor in every building. There's a mentor assigned to the teacher, um, always a tenured teacher, always a veteran teacher that has a lot of experience.
Sure.
Um, and then there is the structures of professional learning built in within their collaborative times of meeting. Um, they may be part of a committee, like a writing committee or something else if they choose to be. Um, and then there's the uh, external professional learning, I'll call it, where they go to um, a workshop, say at BOCs or they're provided an in-service or allowed to take an in-service that's been approved, um, that will help elevate their teaching skills and strategies. We are working with the union to talk about the mentoring program in general, um, and ways in which we can enhance it. I know some other schools have in year two had teachers take the Skillful Teaching Course, um, which is a long course. It's a, it would be a lot of days out of the classroom and a lot of time for the teacher, but no finer courses there than that course that teaches instructional skills only. It's not about content, it's not about an initiative or a program, it is about being a good teacher in your classroom. So that might be something that we can bring to Putnam Valley or PNW BOCs offers that. We could maybe send new teachers out to that. Again, between, you know, figuring out schedules and subs, coverage and all of those things and this new teacher now needing to leave their class a lot, it's a consideration, it's not something we're doing. Um, but we are looking at ways in which to enhance what we currently offer for all teachers.
I also want to add that all staff goes through a comprehensive three-day new employee orientation prior to even starting much of those initiatives that Jackie had uh, laid out. And that's an opportunity both to learn from administrators from across the district, learn from teacher leaders, as well as having outside consultants come in and work with them.
And they get a private bus tour from.
And they get a private bus tour from Sam and Dave.
And they do tabletop scenarios with the principals and they put together a puzzle while missing puzzle pieces in a fifteen-minute session. Maybe a little protocol or a activity I give them to do to ice break. But uh, they do a lot of learning with us here. Um, I, I would say there isn't any outside consultant that comes to that event. Uh, it's all in-house, it's all with us. And it's not just on teaching and learning, it's on the community, it's on what to do when, um, it's on uh, social media use and you know, what to know, what to do. We have every administrator and staff member meet them or as much as we can. So we have the business office come in and meet with them and introduce themselves and talk about some business office issues that they might need to know about. Um, we have uh, Jeannie comes in, She Needs a Night comes in, um, who is our community relations uh, staff member and she helps to teach them how to get into the tiger spirit alongside the athletic director. So how can you be more involved in our, you know, games and come support kids? You know, where can you get the swag? Where can you, you know? So we really try to um, give them the full Putnam Valley experience. We take them on our wellness trail. Um, Dave does a great job guiding them along the wellness trail and showing them what opportunities are available to them.
Sure.
So uh, it's full, our hands-on Putnam Valley community and the bus store is an example of that.
Absolutely. And lastly, I just want to recognize the amount of times that teacher leadership has been mentioned tonight. That is really important to this particular community of educators that work here. Um, and every year I hear more about how teachers are leading this work. This vast amount of information tonight could not be possible without teachers leading much of this groundwork. And so uh, I just want to wholeheartedly thank those people who have stepped, stepped up in that leadership capacity, um, because it really is the sign of a healthy culture. And uh, we, we look forward to more leaders, growing other leaders. Um, and that's the sign of great leadership. So uh, kudos to you and your team for all of the work that you've done this year.
Thank you.
Jackie, along with that, back to the new employee orientation. That's one thing that you've put on your plate over the last few years since you've come to the district. You've done a great job with that. There's a lot of behind the scenes work to coordinate and get it all together and um, just, I want to, I want to recognize you for that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This was all very impressive. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank Margaret. Thank.
So I, I just wanted to close it by saying, uh, all of this is not possible without a tremendous amount of leadership uh, that takes place. And I think those leaders before us this evening sharing this information certainly deserve all of the credit for making all of this possible. Um, I think it's their job to lead our teachers. I think our teachers do a fantastic job leading our students and I think our students are really the stars of the show every day. And unless all of those groups are working together, uh, we can't achieve the great things that we're able to do. So um, certainly starts with tremendous leadership at some. So, thank you all.
Absolutely.
Yep. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay. Um, our next presentation or discussion is on policy twenty seventy-five, maintaining district neutrality on non-school-related matters. Um, we didn't actually make any changes to it, correct? Since the last meeting? Um, so does anybody have any questions or comments on?
I, I think it's important that we pass it, just to have it on the books. And as Dr. Luft explained, it's, it's been there, it's been talked about, but there's no print version of it. So talk is cheap. If you need something, you know, written and, and set and um, you know, substantiated to have a true policy, so that this is important.
Um, yeah, no, we spoke about it earlier in the meeting. Really our intention is, is to capture what's been a long, uh, existing practice. Uh, it's my belief that nobody's life and no employee's life at Putnam Valley will be any different, uh, after this policy is adopted. Uh, that was not our intention. There's nothing new in here. It's really just capturing what has been a longstanding practice. Um, and we're aware that there's always possibility that this could sort of be turned against us. And I would just say that we are certainly willing to quickly pivot and make any changes if necessary, uh, but certainly not our intention to need to do so.
Right. Okay.
Along with that, I appreciate Joe's comments and really make us look deeply into it. So thank you, Jeff, for bringing that to our attention.
Absolutely. Yep. Okay, the calendar.
So I presented the first draft calendar last board meeting. That included two full weeks off for the Christmas break. The board had requested that we go back um, and propose a second draft. Uh, that second draft has school days on December twenty-second and twenty-third. Uh, in lieu of those two days being recess days, the second option calendar has the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and the Monday after Easter as recess periods. Everything else remains the same between the two drafts. I did, as promised, follow back up with both unions and both unions actually changed from their original belief and now both are in support of the sort of option two calendar, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and the Monday after Easter.
All the cooking, that must happen.
Yeah, well, that, that's it. The day before Thanksgiving.
And the cleanup after Easter.
And then, you know, Easter, right? Easter Monday, you know, and so, yeah, I'm, I'm glad. Thank you.
I'll be sure to remind them all on December 23rd.
That's okay. That's okay.
That's why you're the superintendent.
I'm going to pull this video where it's officially noted for the record.
I mean, if they didn't want that, that was fine too, but I'm just saying, that day before Thanksgiving.
That and the Easter, you know, because Sunday is, for many individuals, is a big celebration. Easter Sunday, and then, you know, to have the next day free to unwind, I think that's a no-brainer. So, yeah, I'm glad they like that.
So either certainly good with me, but I would, I would certainly endorse their wishes to go with the second option.
I was looking at the Bosse's calendar and ours, the second option is similar to the Bosse's calendar.
Oh, very good.
Right. None of our options are exactly the same as the Bosse's, but the Bosse's calendar does not have two weeks. It's about split, about 50-50. There is many districts who weren't expecting to have the two weeks, then went back. Their second draft included the two weeks, so there are a bunch who will be off for both weeks, but there are some that will have the Wednesday before and the Monday after Easter as well.
Yeah.
So it'll be a mix.
And to confirm, if there's no, if we had to give back snow days as a district, May 22nd and May 26th?
Yes, so there's a note on the bottom right-hand side of the calendar. We would start to give back snow days, starting with the 6th, the Monday after, and then working our way from the Monday towards Friday. We wouldn't, we would stop at Thursday. And then if there's no snow days within the year, the first give-back day would be the Friday before Memorial Day. And if we had, sorry, if we had no snow days, the first day would be the Friday before Memorial Day we'd give back, and the second would be the Tuesday after. And if there was only one snow day, we would give back the Friday before Memorial Day first. Those are contractual obligations as well.
I will also say that this calendar, I really like that after Christmas break, it goes until through that Friday. As a parent whose child now wants to stay up until midnight, having to go back the day after New Year's Day was, I'm sure, tough for the teachers. I really appreciate having through that weekend.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we don't have any student reports because we have no students here tonight, but Dr. Luft, I'm going to let you give your report.
So I'm going to do my report from over here. All right, so the first thing I want to do is recognize some of our science research students, and many of us had the opportunity to attend their practice evening before attending the Taconic Hills competition, which was last Saturday, I believe. We received great news. Seven of the 18 students that we were able to see received awards, so I'll quickly go through it. Kaitlin Kumis in behavioral science, she won the Excellent Research Award. Asia Bayounis, Cell Biology Judge's Choice Award. Felicia Rodriguez, Cell Biology Excellent Research Award. Lily Johnson, Cell Biology Excellent Research Award. Isabella Qui, Science Health Behavior Data Judge's Choice Award. McKinley Sherp, Plant Animal Science Judge's Choice Award. And Christina Morganova, STEM Excellent Research Award. So congratulations to all those students. I'm always in awe and sitting there just trying to understand the complexity of their projects as they present them at 150 miles an hour. But it's, it's amazing that high school students are able to perform that level of work. So this evening, much of what I wanted to focus on was the upcoming Capitol Facilities Project. As many in the community, as hopefully everyone in the community knows, the upcoming vote is scheduled for Tuesday, January 28th. I just wanted to point the community towards some of the many resources that have been made available, as well as share some of the many ways in which we've provided information or made ourselves available to the community to help answer any questions. So as soon as you go to the Putnam Valley School District website, you'll see this banner right across the top of the page. This is sort of the repository for all of the Capitol Facilities project information. Within this page is a wealth of information. It includes previous presentations that we're giving at board meetings, videos of board meetings, FAQ documents, financial facts, the posters that went home, the trifold, really detailed information regarding every aspect of the project, absentee voter information, which I'll give you more information about in a minute. So really, any information that is available is available on this website, including our newly created, oops. Sorry. We're good? You all right? Oh, sorry. Sending it to the test, thank you. So one of the things that we created, or I shouldn't say we created, that was created by the fantastic Daniel Mahoney, and you may recognize a voice on the presentation as well. But this is really something that we wanted to provide to the community, just to give sort of a quick and easy information about the project, getting it out to the entire community. And while last time we had contracted an external service to produce a video about our Capitol project, this one is created in-house by our own Daniel Mahoney. So we'll play it now.
Your schools, your students, your future. This January, the Putnam Valley community will have the opportunity to build on a transformative Capitol improvement project that will shape our schools and community for generations to come. This project will tackle key infrastructure challenges identified in our building conditions report and is the culmination of the work of the district facilities planning committee, which worked for well over a year to identify and prioritize project details. At its core, the project focuses on much-needed infrastructure upgrades, including the retaining wall and parking lot at the middle and high school campus, aging roofs and heating systems, and accessibility barriers. By addressing these needs now, we prevent more cost and repairs in the future and ensure that our schools remain safe, functional, and welcoming. The proposed project will be tax-neutral, as it replaces existing aspiring debt. The majority of the funding will come from state aid and the use of capital reserve funds, ensuring no impact on school taxes for our community. The timing of the project allows the district to address critical infrastructure needs while minimizing the impact on the taxpayer and also limits disruptions to the students' school day. At the elementary school, we will transform the library into a student learning commons, a modern innovative space that inspires creativity and collaboration. The nurses' suite will be expanded and upgraded with better air quality, isolation spaces, and a welcoming atmosphere to meet our students' needs. Outside, an additional area will be designed especially for our youngest students and will improve accessibility for all students. We will also complete our transition to geothermal heating and cooling, saving the significant expense of replacing aging oil burners, as well as reducing future energy costs and eliminating dependency on fossil fuels. At the middle school, improvements start with safety and accessibility. A redesigned parking lot, new lighting, sidewalks, and a dedicated bus lane. Inside, instructional spaces will be enhanced with redesigned rooms, small group spaces, and updated classrooms. For our performers, new lighting and controls will enhance the performing arts experience. At the high school, essential infrastructure work will replace the failing retaining wall and the original flat roofs, which are now more than 25 years old. Solar panels will be installed on the wellness center roof, reducing utility costs, and the parking lot will be resurfaced. Improvements will make the courtyard and outdoor learning spaces more accessible, and the current weight room will be updated to accommodate the needs of our students, including those in our IB dance class. Best of all, the proposed work at all three schools can be accomplished without an additional tax burden. A substantial portion, 9.2 million, will be funded by state aid, with an additional 2.5 million coming from our capital reserve fund. Careful long-term planning allows us to address infrastructure needs without increasing the tax burden for our community. To find additional information, please visit our website. The vote will be on January 28th. Mark your calendar and make your voice heard. Together, we are building a brighter future for our students and our community. Remember to vote at Putnam Valley Elementary School on January 28th from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Very well done.
That is well done.
Very well done.
Dr. Luft, there's been some concern that we did not give prior notice or short notice to this vote. I want to remind people that we've been discussing this since last winter. Just about a year ago, you started to reveal the recommendations of the committee, the committee that was open to any resident who wished to participate, and all the plans that the committee was agreeing upon. And then you finalized that, if I recall correctly, in late spring, over the summer, all fall, giving out notices, posting the banners and stuff on our website. And the, you know, the final conclusion to all this way back in September, October. I don't know how much more prior notice individuals would need about this vote than what you have provided. I mean, we're working on a timeline. It had been noted way back in October that the vote would be in January. All the materials were there on our website. So the individuals that I have spoken to, I told them, I said, either your memory is very short, or you just weren't involved, or just didn't observe what the district was putting out there. And the mailings, I received my mailing in, it had to be very early January, I think the first week of January, you know, the bulletin that you sent out. So I don't understand this concern about not enough notice on this vote. It's a puzzlement to me.
All right. So I didn't have a chance to respond to that individual yet, but I did want to highlight some of the many ways we have worked to ensure that the community is well-versed on this project. It goes without saying, the more informed the community is, the more turnout we get for voters, the more educated our community is regarding the project, we feel as if the more support it'll receive. So we would have, we would gain nothing by withholding information from the community. In fact, our goal is to get as much information to the community as humanly possible because we want as much of that community as possible to come out and cast a ballot next Tuesday. So it certainly defies logic for us to hide this information from the community. We are reliant upon the community to come out and vote. As we've said time and time again, our vast majority, a majority of our voters are aged 55 and older, which means many of which are, our voters do not have school-aged children. So we owe those individuals aged 55 and older a great deal of gratitude for being the voting block that passes our school budget each year, that passes previous facilities projects, because they have the majority of votes cast. If everyone over the age 55 who came out and voted, voted no, it wouldn't matter if every other voter voted yes. Everything would be defeated. So we certainly owe our, a great deal of gratitude to our community members, many of which are not parents in our schools, and we have no access to, other than information that is presented publicly, whether it be mailed to their house or shared in other public venues, to inform the community regarding the upcoming project. So some of those many ways in which, the other piece of this is, State Education Department has very strict rules regarding public notice. We have to be able to prove and show that we've made appropriate public notice. Obviously, there's been many presentations that have taken place at public board meetings, those postings put in newspapers, as well as a wealth of information on our website, the community electronic newsletters and press releases that go out to anybody in the community who wishes to sign up. Those do not go out to only families. They are open to the public. Anybody who wants to receive that newsletter can welcome, can sign up and receive it. We talked about public board meetings. Obviously, we utilize our social media accounts. This, I mean, this video will be posted on our, on our social media accounts and available to anyone who has access to a computer. The digital signs have, for a long time, broadcast in front of both our elementary school and the middle school, high school campus, information about the upcoming vote. We've held staff meetings, we've PTA meetings, public question-and-answer sessions, public listening hours. We sent a mailer to every household in Putnam Valley. Again, we're not sending it to our list of people. It goes to every address. It's not even addressed. It just says current resident. So that, I also confirmed my mother, who lives in Putnam Valley, she received hers as well. So that information has been available. We have trifolds that are available in public locations, delis, pizzerias, library, the newsletter's available in the library, as well as the town hall. So any way we can think of getting information out to the community, we have. If anybody has another avenue, we've approached the senior center, we've approached the firehouse. Anyone who is willing to take us in, we will take the show on the road and speak directly to anyone who wants more information. For us, the most valuable piece is accurate information, factual information. It happens every time we have a vote come up. There is a wealth of misinformation, false narratives that are out there. So all we can do is present people with the facts and the truth and allow them to make an informed decision, and we have every interest to get that information out to our community. So that is what we have done for nearly two years. When this first started, we invited all members of the community to be part of the planning process, and now we're a few days away from the vote that encapsulates the work that's happened that we spoke before. Mark came up, he was part of that committee for the last two years as a community member. So there was many others that participated in that as well. One of the other things I wanted to highlight, also available on our facilities planning, the image on the bottom right went out in an electronic newsletter last week. It speaks to maybe many of the reasons in which Putnam Valley is the one district in New York State that was recommended for the Green Ribbon School District. And this is really a huge thank you to those many years ago who had the foresight to start Putnam Valley moving in this direction, and it really started with the installation of the geothermal wells in 1999. So this is obviously all based upon estimates, but we're estimating the district has saved 4 million gallons of heating oil since those wells were installed in 1999. That's a savings of nearly $13 million to our taxpayers over the past 25 years. The proposed additional geothermal will save an estimated $100,000 a year, and eliminating 30,000 gallons of heating oil that we use each year at the elementary school. The installation of solar panels beginning in 2019 have already generated 1.25 million kilowatt-hours. So those savings equate to $150,000 in electric utility savings since the installation. And the proposed additional solar panels on the wellness center are estimated to save the district an additional $20,000 a year, generating 200,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity. So all of these things that we're doing, obviously, the end goal is to save taxpayers' dollars. Obviously, there's environmental reasons to do these as well, but certainly there's financial aspects that we want to make sure that the community is aware of, that, yes, we're investing in our facilities, we're installing geothermal, we're installing solar, but in the long run, we're really saving money for our taxpayer community. So that went out as well in the electronic newsletter, but I did take one, take an opportunity to highlight it here and show everyone that that information is also available on our facilities page.
Dr. Luft, just real quick, also on channel 18 and channel 20 for the town website, it's listed.
Okay. So we will, it's there. Okay.
Yep. I also want to just point out some numbers because I think that numbers speak volumes. The message that is, is being transmitted in the community that is absolutely incorrect is that there was not enough notification of the work or the projects that would be happening. And so I just want to clarify with some data because I think that people can share their opinions, and that's nice, but data is really what matters. So the first communication about the facilities committee went out in May of 2023. So when Dr. Luft says two years, it literally has been almost two years since this conversation began. When a communication came out from the district saying that the Putnam Valley School District has established a facilities planning committee to assist the Board of Education in reviewing our current academic and extracurricular spaces, the safety and security of our facilities, and all underlying infrastructure. The letter continues to say that we were looking for as many members as possible of the community to participate in this particular committee, of which 55 people signed up, of which the vast majority of them were community members. And all of that began in May of 2023. The first actual in-person meeting was June 1st of May of 2023. And I say all of that to say that I originally signed up to be on the committee. I was unable to participate after signing up, but the number of emails that I received from Ms. Denike about our facilities meetings are probably the most populated email in my inbox about the work that was happening. And so I just want to clarify with the numbers about the communication that we've had as a district to our community, not just our school members or our parents, about the work that has happened. It was presented at multiple board meetings. And what I would love for, to happen is when people have questions, to come to the right source to ask those questions so that you can get the answers that you're seeking and that you are entitled to. Please do not go to Facebook because Facebook is not the place to get answers. The district is the place to get the appropriate information. And if there are concerns with the timeline, with the mailing, with any part of this process, we would love for everybody to come and have a talk at that microphone, to be able to ask those questions and get the answers they're seeking. Thank you so much.
I want to say something. Because nobody's going to be able to hear you, so you could, as soon as I'm done, you'll have a chance. All right, so there's been a lot of information out there, a lot of conversation about early and absentee ballots, so I want to make sure that we share that information yet again. So it's not too late to still participate in that process, although it is too late to request a ballot by mail, just because it won't get there in time. But the absentee ballots are still available through the district clerk, or they can be downloaded from the district website. The application can still be handed in once, anytime, up until 5:00 p.m. the day of the vote. So we can no longer mail them out, but they are available on the website. It's a two-step process. The first piece is an application. You hand in the application and you get your ballot, and then you have to drop your ballot off before 5:00 p.m. the day of the vote. So that's available to anyone who wants to take advantage of early mail. So, that's available to anyone who wants to take advantage of early mail or absentee ballots, that is still an option. Some of the many events that have transpired here on the campus or at the elementary school, our high school hosted their concert, they're both concerts, and I do want to highlight a guest appearance by Janet, one of our students, who danced to some traditional Albanian music in, in the full garb, it was actually pretty awesome to see. So, they were able to get up there and perform in front of those, the audience. The PTA hosted on Saturday their annual fun day. The district, district emergency response team had a training with Alteris earlier this week. We had our fourth grade winter concert, which again, I know we spoke a little bit about earlier. It was an awesome appearance, the place was packed, I couldn't even physically find somewhere to stand. I was watching from behind the stage at one point, just because that was the only space I could find, and I loved the fact that our students were up there playing ukuleles and keyboards and other instruments outside of the traditional band program that's also made available to them. The, we had a meeting with the Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers, with our administrative team that we thought was very productive and opened to great lines of communications. We've been interviewing for our new director of PPS, because of the upcoming retirement for Dr. Doherty. We had an administrative team meeting, a lyric advisory committee meeting, and a school chief administrator meetings, all taking place within the last week, as well as an athletic council meeting. And just a quick reminder that Wednesday, January 29th, is the Lunar New Year holiday, so there will be no schools next Wednesday, the 29th. That's it, thank you.
Okay, so, let's move to new business. Number one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Holly Keeler to a probationary appointment as a five-hour campus monitor, effective January 27, 2025, with a probationary period of 52 weeks, January 26, 2026, at the elementary school, on step five of the CSEA schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Anthony Andriani to a probationary appointment of part-time bus driver, four hours daily, effective January 20th, uh, I'm sorry, 27th, 2025, with a probationary period of 52 weeks, January 26, 2026, at the Transportation Department, on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Uh, second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Dana Gualtieri to a probationary appointment as an office assistant on step one of the CSEA salary schedule, effective January 25, 2025. Ms. Gualtieri will immediately begin an unpaid leave of act, of absence, effective January 25, 2025, through February 2nd, 2025. Ms. Gualtieri will begin her 52-week probationary period from February 3rd through February, February 3rd, 2025, through February 2nd, 2026.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2025-26 district calendar, as per document number 120-25, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
And that would be document number two, and second.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the second reading of policy 2075, maintaining district neutrality on non-school-related matters, as per document 121/25, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. That's great. All right, I'd like to open it now for public comment on any topic. Did you want to?
Sorry, let me just apologize for cutting you off. No, come on, I don't apologize for cutting you off before, the, the problem is, assuming that you, you want others to hear your question, nobody at home can hear it, so I just wanted to give you a chance to speak into the mic, so thank you.
Yeah, no, I actually.
State your name, please.
I'm sorry.
Introduce yourself, please.
Sure, my name is Stephanie, the last name is Waters. I didn't come here with a question, actually, I just came here to educate myself. This is probably, I don't know, the second or third meeting I've been to in the last 20 years. So, you know, I am the one person that didn't get the mailing, and I'm not here to complain and I'm not here to be negative. You had brought it up. I had no idea about this project. I didn't, I didn't under, I didn't get, get the information, I hadn't, haven't logged on to the Putnam Valley Central School District website to even check. I no longer have kids in the school district. I'm busy with this, I have a, a son who goes to a different school, so I've been busy off-site. To the comment of the information being on the sign, I live past the elementary school. When I go to work, I go down Tinker, I get on the Taconic, I never pass the elementary school, I never pass the high school.
Right.
Also, since the bridge was a problem for whatever amount of years, if I need to leave, I never pass, like, what I do is I go down Simran, if I need to go to Peak Skill, and I could go down Tinker to access my way out of Putnam Valley. So, and guess what? I'm over 55. So, I'm a 55 and older voter, I haven't seen any of the signs that are posted outside, I haven't seen any of the, the trifles or in the delis. I'm not saying they're not there, I'm not here to complain, I'm not here to tell you it's your fault. I'm here taking responsibility of the fact that I didn't know what was going on, and I came to the, the Dr. Loft's listening hour a week ago, just to educate myself. So, I'm a little offended that you're telling, you know, there's people out there that, that aren't, get, didn't get the information. I'm not saying that you haven't tried, but there's a percentage of people that did not get the information, because I'd made phone calls, thinking, am I the only one that didn't know?
Understood.
So, number one. Number two, I'm not here to talk about the Capitol project, because I don't think I'm educated enough, but I do have some feelings about it. I did do some, I called some people, talked to, to people in the community, and I know that the elementary schools had a problem with their boiler for a long time. We've had vendors there, when Dr., uh, when Edelman was there, I know we were having some, so that goes back at least 10 years. Now, all of a sudden, it's an issue, and I have a problem with the nurses station. How come we haven't fixed that prior to now? I mean, the nurses station looks exactly the same when I went to kindergarten there in 1970.
I agree.
Literally.
Yeah.
I mean, are we paying attention to what's going on? Why do we have a wellness center and these things haven't been taken care of prior? But again, I didn't come here for that, I didn't come here to complain, I came here to educate myself, but I did want to respond to both of you. I, I want to back up the fact that I had no idea that this was going on.
That feedback is invaluable for us, I want you to know, and, and please don't take offense, please understand that there's a, a lot of different types of narratives happening in the community right now, many of them with people who are heavily involved in our school district, saying that they did not necessarily know, people that, that I know on the outside, that I've literally talked to about this project, saying that they were not aware. And so, that's where the vast majority of the information we get comes from, so that's, that's the pool that we are usually communicating with.
I get it, I get it.
This information is invaluable, I think, and it is something for the board and the district to consider, that someone who never passes a sign, someone who might go into a deli on a regular basis but is in a rush to get their sandwich and their coffee and get to work, never really knew about this project, and I think that that's something that we need to take into consideration, because that's not okay. And we, we have to figure out as, as a district, how, how do we do better with that? If you don't have kids in our schools, you know?
But I, but I'm here to tell you that I think that's part of the issue. I mean, I'm here and I'm, Jackie, we never met, you did an amazing job. I have to tell you that I always loved the elementary school, my kids, my daughters went, well, loved the elementary school experience. I'm not going to tell you that I didn't love the middle and high school, but that, you know, kids change. So, it was great to hear that, you know, the US News World Report is ranking Putnam Valley, and for a mom who put her three kids in college, about to put her second kid in college, I use that US News World Report. So, that's even more impressive to me. I think it's great. I think, you know, but, at the same time, there's, there, there is a missing piece between what's happening out there and what's happening in here.
So, if you don't mind, and I'll, no obligation to answer, but I'm actually very curious if you have feedback, is there another way that you would suggest, or that, is there, is there, was there an opportunity we missed to get information out to?
I'm not sure, that's why I'm here.
Right, I was just curious if you had thought.
I'm not sure, but, but when you think about it, I've been living in Put, well, I mean, I've been here for a long time, right? I could come in and out of Put, when you think about it, I could come in and out of Putnam Valley, go to work, have a social life, and never pass the high school and the middle school.
Are you, we, we don't have a local paper here, a lot of towns do. Are you on any of the social media apps? Putnam Valley Central School District does have.
I understand that, but since my kids love the school district, you know, the moment your kids are no longer in the school district, you are cut off, your email gets cut off. I, I'm not trying to be negative.
Oh, no, no.
You know, so I don't get that information, and I don't, I, I haven't been paying attention, that's why I'm here. I'll be the, I'm not here to blame you for not getting in touch with me, I'm getting, I'm here to explain to you you're not getting in touch with me. I'm not trying to be negative, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand that there's a gap, and guess what? I care about the gap. I've been living here all my life, since 1970.
I also want to say it's a community issue, it's not just Putnam Valley schools, because if the library has a vote for their members.
I'm not blaming, I'm not, but.
No, no, I just, it just, you know, it's a whole, it's a, a community fix that needs to occur. If there's, well, we have Putnam County News Recorder, and there has been articles in that, in that part, but you have to subscribe to it to receive it, or go to the town hall and pick up a free one. Sometimes there's special town elections that, you know, the whole community, I always use my husband as an example. If I wasn't on the board, would he know what was going on?
I wonder if there's, because you mentioned email, so I'm just, first of all, I'd love to know how you found out about the community hour, because in finding out about that, that was.
Well, because I found out about the vote, and I freaked out, and I wanted, and I got online.
Then you Googled, okay, great, thank you for that. And then my other question is.
Because guess what? At the end of the day, I understand that it is my responsibility as a taxpayer to understand what's going on, so again, I'm not here to be negative, I'm here to start educating myself, take responsibility and learn, and maybe try to help the gap. I don't have an answer, but I'm here because I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to be part of a solution.
Well, we salute you for, honestly, for coming tonight, because this is what I just implored people to do, is to come and ask the questions that they have, to tell us the real issues, and again, I will say, the fact that you did not know about this, for me, is an issue. You're a community member, you had every right to know about it, and I don't know that we can solve the problem tonight, but we need to definitely, you know, put our heads together with the communicate, the, the community members who did not receive the information about how we can better do that. A question I have for you about the email is, is there a way that we can afford community members a way to opt in to email notifications from the school district, whether they have families or not?
They have that on the site.
Our newsletter is open to the entire community. All you have to do is enter your email address and you're on that list for life.
Right, so how do we get that information to people?
Well, we've done it before, I know we've, we've sent it out to graduating seniors and families of graduating seniors, we've sent it out to just the community as a large, we've been, we've embedded it in the mailers that go out to the entire community. Something we started a couple of years ago was mailing newsletters, right? Because our electronic newsletter only goes to the email addresses we have, which is obviously not the entire community. But we started mailing, at an expense, our newsletter periodically to the entire community, because that's one way to guarantee that the community is getting all that information. Now, whether that mail carrier missed a mailbox or whatever happened to it, I can't speak to that, but we have confirmation and receipt. We printed 5,000 and some odd newsletters, we have confirmation, we know what route numbers they are, we know how many parcels per route number, all of that information was already shared with the community, someone who had requested it. So, I, I feel terrible that there's people who may not have this information, but I also feel as if I don't know there's anything humanly possible for us to do more, absent of me driving around and sticking in everyone's mailbox, which would be a felony, so we don't want to do that. Both parents work for the post office, I know these things. So, I, I mean, that's why I asked the question, because I'm actually hopeful that someone has an answer, says like, well, if you only did this, we, we have nothing to lose and everything to gain by getting information. And then again, I applaud you for coming, both to the listening hour and here, because again, an informed community member is all we can ask for, but if there's any other way for us to get information to those who may have slipped through the cracks, I would take advantage of that in a second. The problem is, is I think we're all saying, is nobody really knows of any way to fill those gaps at this time.
It has to be a proactive, my recommendation would be, I follow, and I'm not necessarily part of all of these things, but I follow the Putnam Valley Central School District on Facebook and Instagram, I follow the Putnam Valley Music, I follow the PTA, the PBEF.
Yeah, I, again, I, I mean, I can't express it enough, I'm not here to blame you, I'm not telling you you're not doing your job.
Oh, I'm just trying to give recommendations that if you're involved in social media, you can try.
You know, I did not, I didn't get the, and you know what? I, I'll be the first one to tell you, maybe I did, and maybe I didn't pay attention, and maybe I threw it away, I'm not going to say to her, there's absolutely no way I didn't perceive it, but I didn't know about, I didn't know about the Capitol project from two years ago.
Right. Well, I'm wondering too, like during budget vote season.
I appreciate you putting out that information, and I called a, a lot of, you know, my peers, people my age-ish, if you will, and I got the same response, they, they didn't know. So, you know, again, we're not going to solve this problem here, but we do exist.
Thank you for that, that really is enlightening, so thank you so much. And I, I'm also just wondering if like the old-school lawn sign, you know, is something that.
Is there a place that you frequent to look at?
We need to consider.
Billboards or bulletins? Do you look at the pharmacy?
Like, I, I, I just said, I, I, I don't drive through, since the bridge was a problem, I've, I've, I've navigated a way out of Putnam Valley, not coming through town. I mean, I'm not making that up. If I need to go into the Peak Skill area, I go down Simran, that gets me right down to Oregon Road. If I, and I, I live far out enough that Tinker Hill is my.
What about Tompkins Cultural Center?
What about it?
Do you pass it? There's a billboard there.
No, I go, I go down Tinker. And, and you know what? That's a, just as a, a community-wide issue, if you think about it, people who are living on Brian Pond Road, they're never driving by.
That's right.
They're getting off the Taconic, getting on Brian Pond Road, right? There's, there's people that live further out than I do, they take Wiccopy.
Yeah.
I mean, not everybody's in this hub.
Right. May I ask this question?
Again, not to be negative, but just.
No, this is good, and I, again, we're only asking questions so we can learn about how to do this better. During budget vote season, do you see the signs that we put up for the budget vote? Like, do you ever pass those, or like?
Well, I got to be honest, when it's budget vote time, I'm paying attention, right? So, I'm, I'm looking for the mailing.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm paying attention for that.
You're just more aware in general, okay.
But, and we're talking about something that's happening in January, I'm not, you know, this is not something that happens annually, right? So, no one's looking for.
Right, that is correct.
I, I think it's important too, one of the questions that I had asked.
Coming off a holiday as well.
Right, right. I had asked Dr. Loft about the timeline, that was one of my questions, was why are we doing this now? And what he shared with me is actually for the last three, four, maybe five big projects that the district has done, that the vote has always been in the same timeline, and it's really, it's more so for the minimal disruption to, for students, so that most of the work can get done in the summertime, like, that's one of the bigger reasons, right? There are some other reasons involved there, but it makes sense that, you know, we have to plan 18 months out to make sure that contracts and things like that are approved. But, one of the things that I'm just wondering for the board to think about, for the district to think about, is how, you know, people who are running for the board or running for an election, they post their signs everywhere possible so that it can be seen, maybe that's something that we need to consider when we put these things up for, for a vote. I don't know that it's something that, a cost that we can incur, but maybe a better, like a more old-school way to just get the information out for those who may not be following our social media, those who may not be passing the schools, those who may not have children, or friends who have children in the school district where this is a topic of conversation. Obviously, there's a sector that we didn't reach, and we need to figure out how to do better with that, and for the general election that we have every year anyway, you know?
How old, how old's your oldest?
High school.
High school. So, I could tell you, once my kids graduate high school, I was happy to be, to remove myself, it, it's not a disrespectful thing, but I was happy to kind of just shut this off, to be honest with you. And then once my son started going to a different high school, it was easy to just decide, cut it, cut it off. Um, and you know what? The reason why it's easy to cut off, it, it gets to be overwhelming. Gets to be overwhelming. You know, you question everything after a while, and you want to just shut it down, and once you shut it down, it's hard, so hard to open up that door again, you know? Being here amongst all you educators, it, I feel the passion, you know, it, it's great that the passion's here, right? But that doesn't always translate to the parent, that doesn't always translate to the kid, that doesn't always translate to the family at home. Like, I get that, this is your job, this is what you love to do, this is your passion, doesn't mean it's my passion, with all, with all due respect, I'm not trying to be negative, but, you know, not every family has an amazing experience at the Putnam Valley Central School District, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, so when their time is done, they're, they're ready to leave. You know, it's, it's, it's easy to be in a room with like-minded people. Not everybody is like-minded, especially in Putnam Valley. I mean, that's what's, what's, makes this Putnam Valley special.
Absolutely.
Right, Sam? I mean, Sam's been here a long time. Dr. Luff's been here a long time.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a gamut of people here, and we all have our, have our different thoughts and feelings and passions, and one of the great things about living in Putnam Valley is you get to be who you want to be, and that doesn't always mean paying attention. Not saying, I'm not saying that's the right way to be, but it's part of the culture here. We need to understand that, if you want to do a better job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Stephanie, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, upcoming...
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, wait.
He did warn you beforehand. Still Joe Ferraro? Thank you. Some housekeeping stuff. I was on the website today, and the Inside Putnam Valley that is like the top video on our homepage is almost a year old, it's talking about last year's budget. Um, I would, you know, Inside Putnam Valley, I mean, is not, doesn't, is not one of those highly-watched, you know, programs, but it does get, if it does get translated to eighteen and twenty, it's open to that, and maybe that would have been something that would have been a good thing for the project, to be, you know, a topic of that conversation with Eric Gross, and had that put on eighteen and twenty. Again, I don't know, the viewership is there.
Do they not go on there anymore? The Inside Putnam Valley Schools, do they not go on the Community Access page anymore? They could? I know they used to, but I don't know.
Because there's still, I mean, there's, some of the stuff they're showing is, is a board meeting from last March, I mean...
Well, I do want to, we, we don't control it, so all we do is share the media with them.
Right, I understand that. So, it gets to, you know, the district can do everything it want, tries to, to get as more, most accurate and recent information out there, there's only so many vehicles which that can happen. I'm a big proponent, and I was the one that pushed really hard for printed newsletters, and I think more of those, and maybe a postcard to tease, to talk, is, is a way, a cheaper way to get to all community members to, to do that. I'm a big believer in mail, I know that book mail is the most cost-effective way to do it, because you don't have the addressee, um, and you're not paying for, essentially for that list, really, in that way, but, um, a victim of that is sometimes it doesn't always get delivered to everybody, just that's, you know, you don't, everybody doesn't get a penny saved every time either. So, those, that's, that's an issue there. Um, what I really wanted primarily to talk about is, um, noise that I see on, online, positive and or negative, mostly negative, um, but I, the, the narrative that probably bothers me with others is that the school district is taxing people out of their homes. Number one, with this project, it is not, I understand it to be tax-neutral, number one. Number two, the district, three years ago now, um, did vote to increase exemptions for seniors and veterans, that comes into full effect this year, and I want to encourage everybody to take advantage of those benefits that exist, uh, so that, um, that date is in March, you can still apply if you've never applied, and I think you might need to apply every year, I'm not sure, but I know if you've never done it, you could still do that, and it would be in plight, placed for, uh, benefits, uh, moving forward, um, multiple benefits on that, so...
That's great info, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's key, because I think that those, there are people who, who, um, would, would, could benefit significantly by that. Now, that being said, if you don't qualify and others do, there is a transfer of who pays that burden, and that's just kind of how our, our whole business works in taxing, right? Not everybody pays the same for everything. For instance, I, I pulled up a few publicly-available tax bills, and there are some, some people who have multiple properties paying less than half of what I pay, and I'm not saying that's a negative thing, I'm just saying that's a fact, and that is a result of the exemptions. And so, there are significant benefits to that, so I, I've got a handful here, I'm not going to read any names, or I'm not going to say any specifics, but just to be clear, this, I'm looking at a couple people, uh, that have multiple properties and are paying less than half of what I pay, and that's because I'm, as I like to say, I'm not a senior.
Nurse, I've corrected, I've corrected my language.
Um, so, there, there's that piece, and I want people to take advantage of that if they can, and I would suggest the board also re-review as that comes up as a new, uh, as a 2025, as the end of this current, uh, numbers, I would suggest that you, you look at that again. I do want to say that a lot of the people that are against this bond vote were also against having a high school, and, which is, they're still litigating that decision twenty-five years ago, uh, more than twenty-five years ago. Um, but I, I have something I wrote here, as a district, it would transform from a district that sends its fifteen and sixteen-year-olds to various other schools where local Putnam Valley control did not exist, and it's now become a magnet and a leader in the region, especially with the implementation of IB, and in, and to a school that attracts students from Garrison, which is a far cry from district merger conversations that were happening, where they rejected us because they didn't want to be associated with the RIFRAFP. So, you know, with the high school and its IB program, with, without the high school and its IB program, it's doubtful that IB would have ever taken a seat in the middle school and the elementary school, and as we're going to see, it, it will change, it will be transformative to the product that we deliver and the type of student that we graduate. And specifically on the bond vote, I think it's really, as I understand it and I've looked at it, I, I was on the committee, it's really focused on core infrastructure, you know, and health and safety projects. I, I, it's almost exclusively needs-based versus wants-based, and there's, you know, likening it to a wellness center, which is kind of a nice thing to have, uh, as far as, uh, what it, it, it means to the district, but it's really about needs and not wants. And I do think the idea of, uh, taking advantage of a time when debt expires, that those are, that's an opportunity to be able to financially and fiscally responsibly put, put in projects that you're going to have to do at some point anyway. It's not as though that wall's going to miraculously fix itself, it's not like the driveway and the drainage is going to miraculously fix itself, it's probably only going to be worse with the solar farm, um, as far as drainage issues. I really believe that when we have those opportunities to do something that's tax-neutral on projects that we are going to have to do anyway, it makes sense that, that, the timing of doing that, it also helps keep a stable basis without, in, in this tax cap era, you know, we have the, the issues of, we don't have, the, we don't want those mad fluctuations, because we probably can't weather those storms, and will face cuts on the district as far as being able to secure super majorities for votes for regular budgets, because then we'd have to try and either do bigger bonds that would have a tax impact, or increase the budget, uh, the operating budget to exceed the tax cap, which neither of those are going to be palatable to a lot of our community. So, this is a wa, I believe is a wise way to move forward responsibly to replace expiring debt. And I encourage all voters to get to the polls on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, from six AM to nine AM, and at the elementary school, and I'm done now, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, um, upcoming meeting topics?
So, our next meeting is scheduled for February thirteenth, that'll be athletics and technology budget presentations, and the following me can, uh, following meeting, February twenty-seventh, facilities and special education budgets.
Uh, board member comments?
Vote, the twenty-eight.
Get your absentee ballot.
Whatever you want to vote, 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 that's important.
Get your absentee ballot. Um, the student of the month breakfast was phenomenal today at the middle school. Lots of parents came to celebrate their children, lots of children were celebrated for various reasons. Our food services staff is absolutely amazing, Sandra, who leads that, is just amazing, she is just on it, and just so amazing, so I just want to give her a shout-out. Uh, and the middle school team really does a tremendous job of honoring kids and making them feel really good about the hard work that they're doing, so.
Great.